Intendants, we got... How to trouble.
Bless everyone, welcome to the school committee meeting. We're going into a full session and I'd ask everyone to stand and join us in a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And I'd ask you to stand with all of us for a moment of silence. In memory of Elaine Antonakis, a retired teacher who passed away on May 21st, 2019. Thank you. First on the agenda is minutes.
Make a motion that we accept the Buildings and Grad Subcommittee meeting on May 2nd.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, the minutes are accepted.
Make a motion the Personnel Subcommittee meeting on May 2nd, 2019 be accepted.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it?
Policy Subcommittee meeting on May 2nd, 2019, make a motion to accept.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it? Minutes are accepted.
I make a motion that the Third Special Meeting on May 2nd, 2019 be accepted.
Second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? The ayes have it?
I make a motion that Policy Subcommittee meeting on May 14th, 2019 be accepted.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, the minutes are accepted. Next on the agenda is appointments and elections. Superintendent Tutwiler?
Yeah, have we take it over? We've got four appointments and three elections this evening. The first is Dr. Antonio Romero, who was appointed the interim school psychologist effective May 6th. Dr. Romero is a Chelsea native and graduated from Boston College, I won't hold that against him. Received his doctorate in clinical psychology from William James University. He completed an internship in the Lynn Public Schools, actually, four years ago. And his advanced internships involved consultation and evaluations in the Boston Public Schools. We're thrilled to welcome him to our special ed team. Dr. Romero. Peter Viselli, principal at Cobbett Elementary effective May 1st. Mr. Viselli was appointed acting principal in August 2018. From the very start, he exhibited notably thoughtful leadership prioritizing social and emotional well-being and rigorous instruction in his effort to do what is best for students first and foremost and the school system that serves them. What is more, Mr. Viselli's deep familiarity with the students, families, and community partners as well as the systems and structures at Cobbett under Ms. Garrity's expert leadership serves as a perfect foundation for stability and success going forward. And all Mr. Viselli has proven that he has all of the necessary skills and the knowledge base to lead effectively. We're thrilled to appoint him to this role, Mr. Viselli.
Mr. Tuttwiler. This is the Arrowhead School Committee. Thank you very much for this appointment. I am extremely grateful and humbled as I look forward to continuing to work over at Cobbett. I would like to thank the following people, right over here to my left. Timber, program specialist, summer guidance, elementary instruction teacher. Suleynis and principal, Sue Garrity, my mentor at Engels, or from Engels, I mean, Tadell. And if I don't mention her name, it's gonna be a long ride home, my wife's enjoying it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Viselli might be the only Lynn Public Schools employee that's taller than I am. And better looking. Next is Elizabeth Crowley Burns, who's not with us this evening. Who was appointed program specialist at Washington Elementary effective May 20th. She's actually been there the entire year, done an incredible job. And I know the staff and the principal at Washington Elementary are really excited about her continuing to do work there. So congratulations to Ms. Crowley Burns. And next is Glenda Cologne, who will be principal at Connery Elementary effective July 1st. Ms. Cologne will replace Dr. Mary Dill, who will continue as principal at Brickett Elementary School. Ms. Cologne distinguished herself among a talented pool of candidates as one who would make a wonderful addition to the Lynn Public Schools leadership team. She has a proven record of demonstrating notable strengths in instructional leadership, professional learning, design and delivery, and building school culture. Her current position is at a smaller school, but we all know that the leaders of small schools are completely prepared and equipped to lead large schools because they know every role intimately. Most importantly perhaps is Ms. Cologne's deep commitment to each student and his or her growth and development. I welcome her as we believe, based on our research, as the district's first Latina principal.
That is very exciting to hear, right? It is an honor. Thank you so much for, you know, the opportunity. I really appreciate it and I'm looking forward to serving the children, the teachers, and the families at Lynn Public Schools. This is very exciting and I look forward to learning from all of you. So, thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Next, we have three nurse elections. I recommend Caitlin Ariel, interim effective April 24th, 2019.
That requires a roll call from the committee? Is there a motion?
I make a motion that Caitlin Ariel's name be put forward as for a nurse's interim nurse position.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Cassias?
Caitlin Ariel, yes.
Ms. Capola?
Caitlin Ariel.
Mr. Ford?
Caitlin Ariel.
Ms. Gailey?
Caitlin Ariel.
Ms. Nicholson?
Caitlin Ariel.
Mr. Sadway?
Caitlin Ariel.
Ms. McGee?
Caitlin Ariel.
Congratulations to Nurse Ariel. Next, I'd like to recommend Tanya Fabiano, effective September 2019.
Is there a motion on the floor?
Make a motion to recommend Tanya Fabiano as a school nurse.
Second.
Requires a roll call?
Ms. Cassias?
Tanya Fabiano.
Ms. Capola?
Tanya Fabiano.
Mr. Ford?
Tanya Fabiano.
Ms. Gailey?
Tanya Fabiano.
Ms. Nicholson?
Tanya Fabiano.
Mr. Sadway?
Tanya Fabiano.
Ms. McGee?
Tanya Fabiano.
And last, and forgive me, I did not get how the name is pronounced, but I'm gonna take a shot at it. I recommend Atika Kimmich, effective September 2019.
Motion?
I make a motion that Atika Kimmich be appointed a school nurse.
Second.
Roll call required.
Ms. Cassias?
Atika Kimmich.
Ms. Capola?
Atika Kimmich.
Mr. Ford?
Atika Kimmich.
Ms. Gailey?
Atika Kimmich.
Ms. Nicholson?
Atika Kimmich.
Sadway?
Atika Kimmich.
Ms. McGee?
Atika Kimmich.
Welcome to all the nurses. Next on the agenda is presentations, and the first will be a food service update from Mr. McQ.
Thank you. Could somebody get that first set of lights over in the corner, please? Thank you. Tonight, I just wanted to bring you all up to date on where we stand with the food service. We did a brief presentation, I believe it was last fall, so there are a lot has happened this year, a lot of good things and continued improvements, as well as I want to bring you up to date as far as some of the other items. But our goal is always to develop nutritionally sound menus that meet the USDA guidelines while also meet the needs of our students' taste and preferences. Because I feel personally if we find foods that the students like and enjoy, they'll actually consume them, because that's the ultimate goal. We don't want to just serve them, we want to make sure they're eating them in their nutritional meals so that, at the end of the day, they're not going home hungry. So tonight, just gonna go through just some things that have happened. We've had some meetings with the parent groups. We'll also just give you a brief update on the dietary guidelines, what goes into a meal, the new menu items that we rolled out this year. We did some, as part of those new menu items and existing items, we did surveys of students on a regular basis. And I think that's important because that tells us truly what they like and don't like. There were some that they liked, we're gonna see, and they now, maybe not so much. So we're trying to keep changing things up as we move forward. As you're aware, we did talk about some pilot programs that we did this year. We'll bring you up to a speed where they stand right now, what's going on. We'll give you an update from September through April as far as the community eligibility program, the CEP program that we all adopted last year, and where we're gonna go with breakfast after the bell. So that's kind of a little quick agenda for today. We'll go right through these. So first, starting off with the North Shore, the parents in the North Shore Labor Council Joint Committee that we had, we had meetings last June and August, and we listened to their concerns, and they talked about menu items and everything else. And we went through some of the nutritional guidelines, so they would understand what we're up against and how we have to meet certain items. We can't serve things that everyone would like to see. But as you saw tonight, we provided you food that we provided them. And you can see for yourself that it is possible to provide good quality food to our students on a regular basis. We also explained the menu planning, as well as we piloted some sun butter and jelly. So it's basically like a peanut butter and jelly. I think someone took one tonight, I saw somebody grab a sandwich, so, you know. So you can see, but...
Ryan grabbed everything.
But just to show you, it's tough, but we can make things happen, and I think that's the exciting part. So then we had a follow-up meeting on March 14th with them, and we had exactly what we had tonight, the same was out here. We had a food sampling, we went through some of the things, we talked about the pilot programs, what had happened at that point. There's been some further developments that we'll get into for you guys in a little bit. They sampled all the food, and then at the end, they completed a survey. So in front of you, I believe, I gave you a copy of the presentation and the survey. So we could take a quick moment, because surveys are good because they can tell us, gauge what we're doing, what their interest is, and what's not. So I think it was underneath, and we had a total of 14 responses. There was about 30 people here that day, so there was a large crowd. And, you know, we asked them, you know, would they eat these meals? And we had some yes and some no's, 11 yeses and 4 no's. And then we asked, what was their favorite item they sampled today? And you sampled the same things. So, I mean, you can see there was some fluctuation of people. And what was your least favorite item? And, you know, as it is, it's the mashed potatoes, because it's tough to give good quality mashed potatoes that, you know, as we're gonna have our registered dietitian explain to you with the carbs and everything else, trying to really meet those guidelines, it does make some things a little bit tough. And somebody, two people said, no, they liked everything, nothing. They thought everything was fine. Two people didn't like the red beans and rice, and really their reason was, because I actually, two people talked to me, and they thought it was a little too spicy. So we talked to the vendor, and the vendor, as we go forward next year, because we did as a sampling out there a couple times, we pulled it back for now, but they're going to, because they do serve this other school dish, they're gonna cut like the spice in half and try it again next year. So we're not gonna give up on it, we're just gonna try, you know, so we can continue to offer different types of meals. So the feedback's good, you can see, so we're listening to what people say and try to keep adjusting this program as we're going forward. And then on the second page, it continues on, like how many times, so we wanted to get a sense what they think, how many times their student or their child actually takes the school lunch, and you can see the responses there. So they vary from twice to five times a week, and three times a week seems to be the average, and I'm not sure why. As you're aware, at the elementary, we offer a hot option and a cold option every day. So there's always two options for every child. At the middle and high school, there are multiple options, it's like five different stations that they can go through and choose, so what they would prefer to eat. Also, are there any items currently not off it? You know, the rice is one, we can't, you know, really do white rice, and I think the dietitian will maybe hopefully explain that when it comes up. We do have, like, at the secondary barbecue chicken, but I think most of the parents were elementary, so it's a little bit tough. So I think some of this is, it seemed to be the gauging of the parents were more. There were a few secondary, but some of these items are served at the secondary, because we can actually cook. And you know what constraints at the elementary make it a little bit more difficult to really provide, you know, cooked meals. We've been working with our vendor, they have a facility down in Woben, all the salads they're making there are coming, the sandwiches are coming a day before that were made fresh. So we're trying to get away from all the frozen items as much as possible and get more items that have been made within a day, and are refrigerated and come up, so we can serve them. So that's kind of the goal we've been trying to work towards as we move forward here. And you can see, going through, there were some comments at the ad that they would, you know, they would like to see more cooked food. And as we just said, they are trying to get them to understand that that's difficult at the elementary. We have no kitchens, no sinks to wash up and the proper things. But hopefully, as the capital plan starts to get formed and down the road, we can one by one start to pick those schools off and get them in shape for that. So the good news is, we take this, we're using this feedback to help continue to evolve our program, because to me, it's a work in progress. It's not, this is it, we're stopping and sitting still. We want to keep working with the vendors to make sure, or my job is to push them to keep getting items that the kids are going to eat every day, because if they're throwing it away, it's not doing any good. You know, we get the charge and get a reimbursement, but that's not what it's about. It's about getting a good quality meal to our child. So at this point, I'm gonna turn it over just briefly to Kelsey, our dietitian, and she can just go through the next few slides and kind of give you an update on the dietary allowances.
Oops. Can you guys hear me okay? Well, yeah, my name is Kelsey, I'm a dietitian here with Lynn Public Schools through the food service department. Just wanted to, this might be kind of a little refresher for us, because I know we've talked about the meal patterns a little bit in the past, but just to show you what we talked with the parent group about, and just to, of course, refresh our memories. So, first slide really kind of shows you recommended dietary allowances, which is based off of the dietary guidelines for Americans. So this is something that comes out every five years, we might be familiar with the term of hearing it, and it basically goes off of the most up-to-date research and evidence-based scientific research out there as to what we need to really fulfill health through the foods that we're eating, also physical activity, mental health, all of the above. So a piece of that is the recommended dietary allowances, which basically, again, off of that scientific research, is showing those nutrients, you get into the micronutrients, and here we have our macronutrients, as to what is that minimum recommendation to really sustain health and keep us healthy. So this chart goes into the amounts as to what they recommend as the requirements for kids. So it goes into your carbohydrates, your protein, your fat, and then you'll also see the functions as to why, those are all very important to have in our meals. So because of that, the USDA meal patterns have created these guidelines that follow these dietary allowances that we must meet. So, next slide. So with that, since kids spend a majority of their day in schools, our breakfast and lunch do have to meet one-third of those dietary allowances at each meal, which makes sense. So what they did to make that easy is they made it component-based. In these pictures, I have passed out in other handouts in the past, but, you know, seeing the calories, the protein, everything that we must follow, making sure we're offering those five food groups to help make sure that we meet those macronutrient requirements. And really with this, you can see too that we have restrictions with calories, with sodium, with fat and trans fat, and the whole grain. So going into the example with the white rice, we have to make sure all the grains we offer have to be whole grain rich. So some restrictions that we have as to what we have to consider when it comes to the meals offered in schools, and how this will differ compared to what we might get at a restaurant or what we might be making at home. So that kind of transitions it into the next slide. So with this, I think the biggest thing that we're trying to push and that we talked with the parent group about, and just to really show people that, yes, it's gonna be different than what you are making at home or what you're getting at a fast food restaurant. So one of the things we have to consider is standardized recipes. So as a government-funded program, we have to ensure that these recipes meet, of course, all those meal pattern requirements, making sure that we're supplying the right portion size, and really just making sure that every portion we provide, every student is identical no matter what. So taking into account with that, you have your ingredients, so nutrients, making sure that each portion gives them those nutrients that we're required to provide. Meal components showing proof to the USDA that we are serving what we're supposed to be serving. And food allergies and portion sizes, this is big too, with where we can't really add what we want to, we can't take away what we want to, because you have all those kids out there that do have food allergies or medical conditions. So we make sure that, of course, I mean, thinking about like a sandwich, if you had a recipe that didn't call for cheese on it, and then you decide in the kitchen you want to put cheese on it, you're putting those kids at risk that have an allergy to dairy. So taking that into account, and then also working with the nurses, so we work a lot with the nurses to make sure that that is being treated. There's a lot that goes into it that we don't really have to think about at home, you know, so we can add what we want to, we can satisfy the three or four, you know, people that have their different taste buds and what they want, and we are trying to meet the needs of thousands of kids and what they like to eat, and also still needing these guidelines. So I provided an example with chicken tenders and mac and cheese. So thinking about chicken tenders, what you get at a fast food restaurant, most likely it's gonna be deep fry, makes it nice and crispy. So here in schools, we can't fry the food that we offer. So none of the food we offer, from your french fries to the General Gauze chicken you tried, chicken tenders, we can't fry. So that's gonna, of course, make it different in taste as well. And then you gotta think, the breading on it. The breading that we have to provide also has to be whole grain even on your chicken tender. So it's gonna be different than what you're getting in a restaurant, so the taste of that. Then you got your mac and cheese. So mac and cheese, I mean, traditionally, I grew up crap mac and cheese. You got your powdered mac and cheese and your white elbow noodles, you can add milk, you can add as much butter and salt as you want to, and we can't really do that here. We wish, you know, sometimes it would taste real good, but of course, we're looking out for the best interest of the health of what we're doing for the kids. So whole grain elbow noodles, our cheese sauce actually has to be cheese that provides the protein in it as well, so it's a handmade cheese sauce that does that. And we can't add all the butter and salt. So kind of that difference as to what we gotta think about and be a little mindful of when it comes to what we're doing and what we're trying to work with. So, yes, that's my update.
All right, thank you. And at the end, if you want to ask questions, I guess we could stop here and ask questions along the way.
Any questions? Member Sadway?
Thank you. Earlier in the square, I was reached out by a parent that was confused about why their child had to pay for milk. And in the slide that you just showed, it said that student must take at least two components for a reimbursement meal, one...
to take, but if it cuts, so that's like if you're taking a full, complete meal. So, if it's just the milk, you're, and Kim might be able to chime in with this, you're charged for that item, just because it's like an à la carte item, so it's not a complete reimbursable meal.
But if they took a fruit, would that be the two? Would that?
So, they have to do three, so they could take like a fruit and a vegetable and a milk, and then they wouldn't get charged for it, or they could...
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Member Ford, then Member Castellanos.
Three.
I got a question on the sun butter. Is that the same as peanut butter?
So, it's made out of sunflower seeds instead of peanut butter, or peanuts. So, with that, it's kind of with all these kids that have peanut allergies now, it's, doesn't have any of that in it, so it's a good alternative for those that have that allergy, and it provides the protein that you would find in your peanut butter.
So, it doesn't affect a student with peanut allergy? Okay, thank you.
Member Castellanos, then Member Capola.
Thank you for the presentation. I really, it's, I got to taste a lot of the food. I've been wanting to taste that food all year. I definitely had a lot of constituents reach out.
I think you enjoyed it.
I did enjoy it. But, you know, I might have a bias too as well, but I'm not going to go into that. So, do we have menus in different languages? I just want to kind of, like, when we talk about learning what we're eating, like our families, do they know what's...
Yeah, so electronically, we have our menus in a variety of different languages that they can access on the website, yes.
So, when we, so, and I know nutrition, so are we educating also, so in those different languages, are we engaging them in a way where we're like teaching them about like what is the benefit of these foods, what are the not, like, what are not, what's the non-benefit? Are we in that platform with them?
I, I'm doing it mostly in the classroom with the kids. I think there's definitely that opportunity more to be working with parents here and there. I know we've done open house nights here and there occasionally, doing educations that way, but definitely...
Well, that kind of leads me to where I was going. So, we have PTOs, PTA's, we have parents that definitely, obviously, we had the madres, we have organizations that I've spoken with, I've met with to discuss, you know, there's been these needs of education. I think nutrition, nutritional value in that in itself is vital. We're in a large district, where there's a lot of different, it's very diverse, and it's definitely, it'll be really helpful to really kind of get people on the same page to understand what we're doing too, to see that we are, when we look at guidelines, the goal is to develop nutritionally sound meals that meet our USDA guidelines, and then second was while also meeting our students' tastes and preferences. But before the, I guess, you know, obviously, we've got to take care of business first, you've got to have, you know, the eligibility to do that. And I do appreciate tonight having that opportunity. And just one more, one more piece, you said we're doing it for the kids, let's quote for you, you say we're doing it for the kids, right? What kind of food recovery programs do we have? Because I feel like a lot of food does go to waste, and I've seen programs across the country that are turning these meals, I saw sandwiches in there that could be taken home. And I, and first thing I have, the first thing I thought was like, well, someone said, actually, you know what? You could take something home after we're done here. And I said, wow.
Yeah.
And that's where that thought just came in my mind. How about, how about a food recovery program? Are we talking about that?
So, I know currently, right now, elementary schools, we do practice share tables, so that's one way we do it. With that part, with taking the food home, is this something that varies state by state, town by town, as to what your Board of Health allows and lets you do? So, I'm not sure what the regulations were in that town, but I know there's a process you have to go through. And I mean, we have a variety of different recovery systems we can take a look at to see if it's something that's of interest to the district, but a lot of it takes the support and the backing of the Board of Health to make sure that we have processes in place.
Well, I think that is a very, it's actually very important that we actually do explore that. I think it's something that is, I think we have a lot of people at the table today who represent constituents that actually bring that up, and that's something that, in procedure, I think we bring the Board of Health to it, we bring the people to the table who make that happen, because I do work in a field where kids go hungry, and the only meals are school lunches, school breakfasts. And they utilize these programs to have that first nurturing meal, and you need to, you know, research shows that if you're not eating, how are you going to perform in school? And we do need to really focus on, I guess, the higher need is, you know, we're doing it for the kids.
Yeah. And I'll add to that, I mean, that's where surveying comes into play, to make sure that we're actually offering the foods they're going to eat and not throw away, so we've been making, you know, huge efforts with that all school year. And then too, with the USDA guidelines, with not making them take five components, where now they have that flexibility to choose is another way that we're helping to cut down on the food waste as much as we can, so, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Member Capola.
You're a dietitian, is that different from a nutritionist in Chatwells?
So, a dietitian, I've gone through, required, I've gone to college through an accredited university, I did an internship, sat for an exam, where a nutritionist, you may not have to always do that to become a nutritionist.
Okay, does Chatwells have a nutritionist, or this person maybe just has mixed up the dietitian from the nutritionist?
I'm the dietitian with Chatwells.
Okay, okay, so that's probably what it is. Okay. From a nurse's point, she was told that the carbs go across the week rather than daily. When you're making the meal plans, are the carbs evenly divided amongst the five days? Remember before you told us it was like over a month's menu?
So, we create a monthly menu, and then our software, what we do when we're creating those daily and weekly menus, it tells us if we're meeting that daily requirement. So, each day, we do have to fit within a range of your calories, your protein, your fat, your carbohydrates.
Okay, so it should be pretty equal from day to day, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I mean, some days might vary, and this is something where the USDA has daily versus weekly requirements. So, at the elementary level, those daily and weekly are a little less than, say, for instance, the higher level.
Because this is a concern from a nurse who has diabetic children.
Okay.
And is concerned that, you know, the carb intake per day, you know, and she was told that it's by the week, so, you know, one day could be much higher carb, it'd be a problem for her children who are diabetic.
It's not a huge fluctuation day to day, I mean, you might get that variation just depending on what the item is that's being served, but there shouldn't be a huge variation.
And on the line of the elementary table, that's been a concern in the secondary, when a child does not want to take a piece of fruit or vegetable. We don't have a table that they could lay that on, and other students are free to come and take it. So, I would, I would like to see that we not just have it in elementary, but we have it in the high school. For us not to get credit for a meal when, you know, because they're not taking a fruit or a vegetable, and we could use the table situation, because there are a lot of kids in the school who would walk by that table.
Yeah.
And take, even if they've already had their lunch and they've already taken an apple, they might want a second apple, or they may want it for later on when they know they're not going to have it. So, that's probably something, I don't know if we need to do motion, or it's just something that we can put into effect so that, and to let those secondary kids know, I think that the people that work in the cafeterias feel like they would like to let them know that, you know, you have to take it, but you can put it over on that table.
Yeah, it's all about the community.
And then, it's, you know, instead of saying, you've got to take a fruit, you've got to take a fruit, instead, you know, they don't want it, it's okay, take it, but share it at the sharing table.
Yeah, definitely.
Okay? Yep, thank you.
Any questions?
Going to continue on? Yes, get a few more slides. So, thank you, Kelsey, very much for bringing that part. So, this year, we rolled out some new items, and there's a list of the sun butter and jelly, chicken tacos, deli cold-cut sandwich, turkey and cheese on a Kaiser, which we, you saw some of these were out here in those plastic things, so this is what we're serving. They had a corn dog, homestyle chicken, flatbread pizza, french bread pizza, and grab and go. And we'll talk a little more about grab and go as we get to the end here. And you can see, so here's where, these were the results. So, this is interesting, and this came up with our meeting with the parents as well. When we first rolled it out, you'll see on the right on the sun butter and jelly, it was eighty-two percent last fall when we started this process. The kids really liked it, but it was being served like a weekly item, and what we found is that folks were, the kids were starting to feel that it was on the menu too often. So, we've now backed off, and you can see, that's why it dropped to sixty-one percent. So, it wasn't necessarily, they didn't necessarily like it, they just felt it was there too much, and they wanted something different. So, the feedback's good. That's why I think it's part of these surveys, part of us constantly talking to our customers with the students as well, getting these type of feedbacks, so we pulled that back, and it's going to maybe on the menu once a month. So, you know, that's why we're trying different sandwich options, different, that way when we have, they're always going to have a hot and a cold, so we try to find other options to give the students variety as well, so they don't say, geez, it's always Friday, it's pizza day, pizza day, pizza day, even though they'll eat it, but it's something that'll change it up a little. So, you can see that the chicken tacos has gone over well, and the cold-cut sandwich, the Kaiser rolls, seventy-one percent, the homestyle chicken and the pizza always do well, so those are those. We also survey some of our existing menu items that are on there, just to see what students like, and obviously, as we talked about, they all love popcorn chicken, you know, even though it's breaded and done differently, eighty-nine percent. Sloppy Joe is sixty-six percent, that was higher at the beginning of the year, it's come down a little, but it's one of those, we're constantly, and that's the thing we're trying to do, is constantly get updated numbers, so we can see what the trend analysis is showing us. The Salisbury steak is at eighty percent, chicken tenders ninety percent, nuggets are going to be ninety percent, and the pizza dip is ninety percent, so, you know, those are the favorites of the students, and there's no surprise there. So, back to the pilot programs, and if you recall, I think we did talk about implementing these. We started these in January, and the smoothies was through collaboration with the New England Dairy Council, and had meetings with them, we got it kicked off, we, I was actually there the first day at the Marshall Middle School, went over pretty well, we had samples for all the students, they all had a little try it, and they gave us their feedback. Some loved it, some said eh, they didn't like the flavor as much, it was like a chocolate strawberry, I believe, and I tried it, I loved the strawberry, it was a little too much chocolatey for me, but everyone's different, so we got a lot of feedback. But it's actually, right now, we got, the feedback is about eighty percent. So, we're trying to check two different flavors as well. Also, you can see, as I stated here, where now it's been expanded to all the middle schools and high schools, so that's the last month or so, so all the schools are going to have, this is part of their breakfast options as well. Again, our favorite local business owner, the One Mighty Mill, that was a great collaboration, the superintendent, I met him back last fall, and he was all excited about working with us, and as we all know, we tried those bagels at one of our meetings we had, and they're really good. He's been working us, he actually only could start at English, well, we could start at one school, so we chose English because it was close to his business at the time, and that went over really well. I think a number of you actually showed up that day, it was awesome, great participation. That's now been expanded, he was able to expand to all our middle schools and high schools, so we're serving bagels, but we also, on certain days, serve bagel sandwiches, and using his bagels as part of the bagel sandwiches. And I think that is a high percentage rate, over eighty percent of the students are liking the bagel sandwiches. So, again, local business, it's a great, we keep talking to him, but again, he serves some other communities as well, so he has some production where he's limited what he can give us, but if he's able to expand this down towards our elementary, we could probably use those as part of those options down there and send them to that facility in Woburn, then make sandwiches and bring them up too. So, we're still talking with John, and we'll see if he can help us in the fall to continue that process. So, these were two pilots that were, I think, successful, and we're looking to continue to look at other options and expand upon if it's the right fit for us. All right, the CEP, the Community Eligibility Program, as you know, you all, we took a vote here last spring to jump into this, and it's gone well, I'd like to see it go a little better, but we did send out notifications in five different languages, and it's also up on our website. We have eight months of results from the eighteen September, eighteen through April, and you can see the overall lunch participation increased by four hundred and fifty-three meals per day throughout the district, that's elementary and on secondary, so that's about a five percent. The CEP suggests that you should see a bump about five to nine percent. So, we've got five, but I mean, I would love to see seven or eight or even nine, but it's a start, so it obviously is an increase, and I gave you the elementary daily average increases, about seventy-six meals per day. I think that, you know, isn't as high as it could have been, but I think at the time that our elementary numbers are good. Breakfast in elementary numbers are solid, because of, we have the universal at the breakfast, and even at the second, at the elementary, a lot of students are taking it. It was, it was more about the middle school and the high schools, you can see, we're up ninety-seven meals per day on average at the middle school and two hundred and eighty at the high school, which is great, because the high school kids, we find sometimes just aren't eating the food. So, I think this has taken that potential stigma of someone being afraid they're being identified as a needy child and not yet getting it, so I think that piece has helped, because there's no questions here, everybody can just go through the line, so that's not an issue anymore. So, it's up, so that's an average of what, about ninety meals per day at each of the three high schools, and about thirty-three at the middle schools. So, that's good. We're going to continue to work on this, we keep submitting our numbers through the state to see if we can get a little bit higher reimbursement, because we keep chasing the students, as new students come in, because they have to be on some type of state funding, and if we can get more students, it'll actually increase our value that we get back from money and change the amount of money we get. So, people here are working on that, and we just resubmitted, haven't heard anything back about any change, but it won't go down, we're guaranteed the rate for four years that we're under, so that's a good thing. And last is breakfast after the bell. So, if we recall last, this past year, we got a notice that the state included in their budget some language for breakfast after the bell, it was a budget item. This year, it's back, we've already looked, it's in the budget, it's sitting there, the same language as last year, as well as there's a bill that's been filed, and it's, I can't see it from here, but it's, there's a Senate, I think it's two sixty-seven and House five ninety-one. So, those are the two bills that are sitting there, actually, I think there's a public hearing June third on that as well going on. So, if those actually do get passed as a bill, that will definitely mandate that we actually go fully to breakfast after the bell. And you can see up there, I gave you, there's breakfast in a classroom or a grab and go, are the two options that they're looking at to do, because it's truly a breakfast after bell. It's great for the elementary, and you can see, I'm telling you, we're going to be doing all elementary schools next September. There'll all be completely, some do it now in the way we do it, because of the way the school works, so we're going to be working with the principals to develop, each school might be a little bit different because of the makeup of those elementary schools, but there's been a commitment, we're doing that. So, every elementary will be after the bell under this program. The middle and high schools, the downfall at the middle and high schools, we see it, is that currently, we only have, the kitchens can't take, serve all the kids at once, so that's one problem, because of the cafeterias, like, for example, English High School currently allows the students to come in in the morning, they sit there and they can go get breakfast before school starts. But if we go to breakfast after the bell, with the Department of Ed says it has to be after the bell, which means kids will have to sit there and wait to after the bell. It doesn't even make sense to me that they'd force us to do that. So, we'd have to go with some type of grab and go option, which is like a brown bag, like a brown bag type lunch, we'd have to have kiosks and set it up so kids could take them off to their classroom, or otherwise, we'd have to have a breakfast where the kids could rotate through the cafeteria, which would really take a lot of time off time-on learning. So, logistically, for the middle and high schools, it's really a tough fit, and we're trying to hold and watch these two bills, and if we are mandated, we're going to have to do it. But right now, we'd rather try to prefer that, and we also, they've allowed the kids to go back if they came in late to go get something at the kitchen currently, so that we just want to make sure that the students do have an option to get something, and I think in the winter, it'd be tough to have all the kids just sitting there and waiting for the actual first bell to ring, and say either grab something there or get it at a kiosk on your way to class. So, we're holding on that, but we definitely committed to go through all the elementary schools. So, that's a wrap of where we have gone this year and what we've done, and if there So we're holding on that, but we definitely committed to go through all the elementary schools. So that's a wrap of where we have gone this year and what we've done. And if there are any other questions at this time, where I think we can try to answer them.
Yes, Member Capola, then Member Nicholson, then Member Gailey.
I'm just not clear on the breakfast after the bell because I had gone to a meeting with Jared and the understanding was that they still had breakfast before it was offered. And then if children were late, it could be breakfast after the bell. Is that, was that an understanding kind of?
Yeah, well, my understanding was that the breakfast after the bell was the way he was talking about it for the middle, for the elementary schools, that they wanted to do it in the classroom. Was that, is that your question or?
Yeah, but I thought that students could come in earlier than that. Students are not able to come in earlier into the building only on, like if it's, if it's a school that opens at seven forty-five, then you open the doors at seven forty-five, they come in and then they have breakfast. Is this what the plan is?
The advisory we saw, the spirit of the law or the spirit of the bill is that it has to be served after the bell. Because there's a lot of questions going on about this, because every community is now looking, are going to be doing this. And they're saying the spirit is that it has to be served. So I'm not sure what, but we're getting this from the Department of Ed.
It sounds like this might be new, different language for the new bill.
Different language than we had, the original bill. It was different.
That's another question.
Okay.
Member Nicholson.
Just really quickly, our understanding is that in order to be in compliance, it has to be after the bell. So, you know, kids come in the morning, you wanna, you know, I'm in the cafeteria, why not let them have something to eat? Does not count. It has to be after the bell, in the classroom.
Member Nicholson.
Thank you. First, I just want to say thank you for the presentation and for all of your work here, the team here and everyone in the, in the public schools that are part of the team that delivers our meals. It's such an important part of the educational experience and it's something that, you know, a district our size doing it day in, day out is no small feat and it's much appreciated. I did have, I do wanna echo what Member Castellanos talked about in terms of the parent education and outreach. I think that's a great opportunity for us to take the great knowledge that we have here and put it to work in our communities because the, it's, as, that's where the, our kids are gonna be getting the rest of their calories. And so for them to be, have the benefit of our full sort of mastery of these issues, I think, is gonna, gonna show up in the classroom when people are able to understand the implications of this. And then also the meal share tables. I think that's a great opportunity to expand. I love the fact that we're doing it now and to see that grow is a great opportunity. And the question I have is about the community eligibility provision. I think it's, I think it's great that we were in the range of increase and like you said, that some room to grow. But do we expect to see a year, like that increase to continue to go up or is that a one-time bump?
I would hope that would continue to go up with our offerings continuing, because to me, the only way you're gonna get more is to get, you know, again, a number of things. Education throughout the schools, as well as continuing to offer products that the students wanna eat or meals they wanna eat. And that's really, because if they, they like something, they're gonna eat it, not just, because otherwise, I mean, we can't, we offer it, they either take it or not take it. So I mean, the goal is to try to get them to get in there and eat their lunch or eat their breakfast and that's, we're trying. So I think that's a combination of things, but I'm not sure I could see another bump on tap. I'd like to see it seven percent next year, but you know, it might be a two percent over than what we have now, but get it closer to that seven percent, you know?
Is that, is that data that Desi has? Could we see what other districts have, has happened once they've introduced CEP or?
I don't know.
They might have some studies like that, yeah.
Yeah, we're not sure about it because we just report our data through a portal and it just goes to them. So I mean.
I mean, that might be worth examining because if we could see if there's a certain district that had a, you know, ten percent increase and figure out if it's something that they did, could be worthwhile conversation. On the breakfast after the bell, so is, are we, for the, for the middle and high schools, is there, would there be an issue with the grab and go approach in terms of learning time or?
Well, no, I think the, if we're gonna do it, the grab and go, the only thing that concerns is that, you know, I, you know, I just don't wanna get, well, the auditors come in, because they actually do come in and audit and they stand there and they watch how things happen. So, you know, if they say, okay, you know, I mean, personally, I would love to see what you said, Donna, is happening. There's no way, it makes sense to me if a kid could come in and take a lunch at twenty minutes before or breakfast before, we should be to do that and then get one after. I would love to see, then make it doable. But if we don't and they say, they come in and they watch you do reimbursable meals, they'll stay in there at the register and watch everything happening and how that all happens and they'll write you up or they could say, you know, we're not gonna give you reimbursements for those meals if you don't follow the process the right way. So that's the only concern I have. But I think grab and go would work if we have to do it. That's the way we're gonna have to do it. But we won't be to serve really a hot breakfast every day. That's the problem.
And I would say in talking with the high school principals, middle school, I think a little different animal, but, well, even then, even with middle school. But the high school principals absolutely have said even grab and go would be a challenge because they have, you know, eighteen hundred kids. They're coming in, they have to stop to grab something and then go. There's gonna be a line of kids trying to get it. It's gonna slow down even the entrance of coming into the building. They're concerned about it. And then the trash and like, there's a lot to consider out there.
I have a question, then Member Sadowite and Gailey. So again, the hearing is in June, is that right?
I think it's June third or fourth.
And you know who filed the bill and what committee is?
I can get you that. I saw it. I don't have it with me right now.
You can get that information.
I can get that too, yes.
Member Sadowite, then then Member Gailey and then Member Capola. And then Member Ford, I'm sorry.
I'll go after her because she was before me.
Member Gailey, yes, okay. And then Member Sadowite, then Member Capola, then then Member Ford.
Mr. McHugh, like on the pilot programs in the schools, the dairy and the Mighty Mill, when it, I'm just curious, when is it starting in the other schools? Or is it already, like I wanna know, is it already starting or is it gonna be?
The middle and high schools or you're talking about elementary? The middle and high schools are, it's already happening now.
In all of them.
All those schools is happening.
And with the, no, okay, good. That was my first. So it wasn't that bad. So no, the next thing I was curious is now that we have the communication going with the madres and parents, I was wondering if there was a way we could do the surveys or something so you could get their input? Like, you know, like send out a survey, how's it going? How's my child, you know, how's your child liking the food now? Would that be doable or would that be too much?
Well, it's, it's, anything's doable, but we can do it if we really, you know, I can do it. But I just feel it's important that we keep talking with our students. Because to me, they're my customers. The students are my customers and, you know, some children are gonna go home and saying, I don't like the food. I mean, we had that meeting and people said, I don't like this food and you all tried the food tonight. And I mean, but their child says, I don't like the food and, and I mean, we all tried it and I think it's very good food and it's quality food. But to me, if you survey the child who's eating it, they're the ones that are gonna tell you, I like it or I don't like it. So that to me is gonna give me instant feedback, not going, a parent's great, but they're gonna talk to their child and I'm not sure how that's gonna be related, if they like it or taking it or not taking it. So the method we felt is successful because we have people right there in the kitchen as the kids are coming through and after they eat, going up and saying, what did you like? Did you like this? You didn't like this? I mean, for example, I mean, you know, Ms. Capola brought up the three bean salad and we validated, that's correct. So it's off the menu. I mean, we're looking, if something's not well-liked, we're gonna go to get another item. So I mean, to me, that's the best direct contact to get results in what I should be doing here.
Okay, I like that idea, but I just wanna make it continuous, Kevin. So we're communicating, so we?
We're not giving up, you know, we're gonna continue to work with groups and get feedback. It's just another channel. But as far as, you know, I think the most constant will be the students to get the best in the up-to-date information.
And last but not least, I wanna thank you for making that presentation to the madres and working with that parents group. I have to commend you for your work and your ethic. It was like unbelievable what you did for the parents and allowing them to come in and actually taste the food. It was commendable. And to sit there when people weren't that happy, I just want, I don't want that scene to ever happen again. I want them to be able to come in, express themselves and taste the food and not feel so upset. But I commend you on it. You did a great job. And I know that the North Shore Labor Council and the madres were very impressed. I thought. I've been talking to them. So, thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. I also wanna reiterate what my fellow school community members said. When kids come into our schools, the parents aren't following them. They don't know what goes on. You know, they get feedback from teachers, they get feedback from their kids. So to take a parent down this journey or to take us down this journey to see the, at least the foods, which is a big concern in our community, and to show us, hey, this is what we're feeding the kids, is a big step. And I appreciate that. I'm gonna be honest with you, some food I liked, some food was, one was way too spicy for me. But that's what you said you're gonna talk about cutting it in half. So it's feedback, you're listening. And I think this is the most progress that we've probably seen so quickly in a long time. So, you know, I appreciate that. I do have a few questions about the CEP. You said that the rate is locked for four years. Is this program locked for four years for the school district?
We're locked in. The only question is if the federal government stopped funding, which we have no control over that budget. So that would be the only thing. But the rate that we were certified for is a percentage of, you know, free, it's not a, every, we don't get a reimbursement for every meal. They take the percentage of your low-income students and then they give you an average rate. So every student gets an average.
And that can go up, but never go down, like you said.
It could go down if your population goes, but you wouldn't, but you would wait four years to go down. So we can't go down for four years. We're locked in for that. You know, we can only, we can try to push it up. And that's what we kinda keep looking at, to see if we can get a higher rate.
And just like with all of the initiatives that we have in our schools, we know that parent involvement is vital. Attendance, I can go on and on and on, okay? So when we speak about these surveys for parents and you tell us, you know, the kids are our customer, I think that having them involved with regards to making sure that their kids know that they need to eat the food because you're not gonna be hungry. You're not gonna come home and, you know, you need to eat. That reinforcement would help us. So are we gonna keep this summer program where people can come and eat at our schools? Is that, that's not gonna change?
No, we do that every year.
So why not use that as a means to possibly educate the families that are coming into our schools about the benefits of the food? So when the school year starts, at least that information can be spread out. I don't wanna miss an opportunity. So if we can just have educational material available to people that come and eat there and that this is the type of food that will be served during the school year, that would be great. And, you know, the item did a story on a food series, which was great. And they talked about the supermarkets, the lack of supermarkets, why, you know, kids are going hungry, families and whatnot. So even reaching out to them and seeing if they can do a story on the fact that the food is free, you just need to take three of the five, you know, these basic things would be very helpful, just for the community to know. Because the five percent is great, but I know that there are still hungry kids.
I'm sure they're out. We're not feeding every child. I mean, that would be the, I mean, the goal is, like Jared was referring to, is the goal is to get every kid to take a lunch every day. I don't see why they wouldn't. I mean, let's, you know, that's the way I look at it. Why wouldn't you take a lunch?
Well, even if they just took the milk, the fruit and vegetable, you know, it's, at least, you know, they'll have something to eat. So I appreciate, again, what you're doing. I appreciate the team and what they're doing. And again, you saw how excited I was about the food. It's good. So I'll reiterate that on record. Thank you.
Member Capola, then Member Ford, then then Member Castellanos.
On the survey, I think they're sort of right whether we surveyed the parents that was at for that specific day. But maybe as the year is coming to an end, maybe there can be time that the kids can answer the surveys.
We can do that.
I know teachers, I'm not saying that, you know, it's weaning down and they have nothing to do but to take these surveys. But I thought just to get input from the students who are eating the food, you know, they're saying, you know, it's not the parents and they're right on that. It is the students. And I think we should ask maybe if we could do that. I mean, even if it's a pilot in one school or something that, you know, I'm not asking to go in all, all the schools. The other thing is, I think the part of educating the parents is really, really important. I had a parent tell me that she's been giving her child three dollars every day for, for her meal. Up to last week, so, you know, we have to get to the parents so that they know that the food is free, you know? A high school person obviously isn't bringing the money back. And when we started the whole thing, you know, all of us here at the table are really concerned that we wanna see our kids eating and having breakfast and having a lunch. And I'm hoping that we can do, make that grab and go work. And if it's mandated, the breakfast after the bell also work. But in this here, it does say that it'll be multiple, like cots or specific areas. Because the cafeteria only holds, I mean, what do we have at English High School, four or five?
Oh, no, we would have to, we would have to do multiple locations at English High School. I mean, it wouldn't be just a caf. I mean, there would be something.
But if you're saying that, you know, everybody's gonna come in at the same time and nobody, you can't fit everybody in the cafeteria. So, you know, we are gonna have to think out of the box of how we're gonna station it. But I would, I really wanna see it work for us and for our kids to be able to. I think a grab and go is gonna be a huge success for us.
Absolutely. If we do a grab and go at the secondary schools, there's gonna be multiple spots where they'll be serving these meals out because it would be chaos trying to get everyone funneled through. So you'd have them throughout the building at various locations where the doors are coming in for the students so we can get them because we don't wanna thirty, forty, fifty deep in line trying to get something because it's gonna still take a minute to grab and go, you know, as we come through, because we have to record all those as well so to get the actual reimbursement. So, yeah, no, it wouldn't be, the caf could go through the caf, but it'll be other places in the building as well. So, yes.
Number Ford.
Yeah, did I miss something earlier? The, the elementary schools, do they have second chance tables?
Share tables, yeah.
Share.
Share, so they, so we used to call them second chance tables, but they still have them?
Yes.
Okay, and like dairy can't be, it's only fruits?
Yeah, like Tom Paris spoke of the fruits.
Now, does it still work that even, they can take these home at the end of the day and the parents could even come in and?
When we implemented that, we left that up to the school principals and what they wanted to, how they wanted them to handle that. So if it's fruit, like, you know, they can certainly make and build for kids to take home.
It takes multiple forms. It depends on the school. Like Kevin said, at Harrington, we actually at one point had a cart that we would go around to, you know, classroom to classroom and kids could come and take what they wanted. Then we transitioned to a table on the exits and that they could take and grab and go. Some schools do it down in the cafeteria. They can take it before they leave the cafeteria. So it takes different forms depending on the school.
Well, it certainly, you know, work, you know, time well spent rather than wasting any of that food.
Absolutely.
Member Castellanos.
So early, we, I heard that, you know, the kids are the customers. I agree. So we, that's the focus. Our lunch aids are very important as well. I think our lunch aids are, I actually have a lunch aid right sitting in the room today. I was at Lynn, Lynn English High School. I remember her, like it was yesterday. Very nurturing, very caring. I've always felt taken care of. I felt a sense of security when I entered that lunchroom. Always asked me how my day was going. Very, it was a very important time of the day for me. Especially, you know, sometimes those were my only meals. Lunch, for me, the voices of the people who we, I'm gonna mention this later on our budget when we review it, but, you know, when it comes to transportation, the bus drivers, the lunch ladies, the pairs, the hall monitors, those are all very important people when we talk about engagement, when we talk about safety, when we talk about first detection of any kind of traumas or, you never, you could never, ever count those folks out. And I got to speak and meet with a lot of lunch ladies, a lot of pairs of things. I built relationships with so many constituents I never would have imagined. And they do, are, I'm very grateful for the staff that we have in Lynn Public Schools. They've worked very hard. And they definitely have a voice over here as long as I'm here at this table. And I just wanted to put that out there that we do need to recognize the hard work that they put in. And they do have a difficult, when we look at enrollment sizes and the trends, they do have, they're feeling impacted as well. So it's very, you know, it's very notable that we definitely have to recognize them as well.
And I agree with you. We had a review last fall where they come out and actually walk through. And I've been doing this for about, this is my third district, twenty years. And at the review, when they did the exit interview, they actually pointed out one of our kitchens that they said they did a fabulous job down there, the lunch people that worked the kitchen. So that was like on a Thursday. So the next day, I went over and told them and they all fell over because they were shocked. But I just said, thank you, as you just said, thank you for your hard work. I'd never had anyone tell me. They never usually pick out a school, like this school, these ladies did a fabulous job. Anything we asked for, they were right on top of things. Everything was right the way it's supposed to be. And if there's something tiny out of place, that they went out, the reviewers said they really were fabulous. So you have to, and we do that. I mean, I felt it was important to go talk to them. And it was funny, they thought I was there for, to tell them they did something wrong or something. And I said, nope, I said, it never happened to me in my twenty years. The first time they actually picked on the school. So we do that. So I mean, and it's good to hear that when you hear good news. And actually, we got, Larry got an email today from a student who just wanted the same thing. Thank the lunch people for all their hard work throughout the year who's graduating tonight and said, just as a thank you, wanted us to know the good job they're doing over there. So, and we'll go over and I'll go over and see them tomorrow and show them the letter so they can see it. And it's important. It's important because they have a hard job. They work out every day. So.
Thank you, Kevin. Thank you, Kevin. Thank you. Next is a presentation from Dr. Tutwiler on proposed budget presentation for FY 2020.
Okay, so I have a PowerPoint. And what I'd like to do this evening is just kind of set the table from a high level and talk a little bit about the process, a little bit about the values and the thinking, and then highlight some of the pieces of the budget that are not going to necessarily jump out at you as you page through the different tabs. And then we have some questions that you've submitted, some of them will be answered in the presentation, but we're happy to respond to any questions that you have. And keep in mind, through this evening, we also have the 13th of June, and we have another meeting on the 27th. So I think we have time to really dive deep, or as deep as you would like to. So the first thing I'd like to do is start from the very top with the allocation, the number for this year. We built a budget based on an allocation of 159.3, 159,300,000, which reflects 7 and 1/4% increase from the previous fiscal year. This is good news, this reflects one of the largest increases in recent memory. The increase is substantive and allows us to recommend additions to meet the needs of students. It is not an end-all amount. We were able to take steps forward, but there's still a number of needs that will remain unmet. By way of reminder, through the analysis and the recent push to improve school funding, it would take actually more than $40 million to close the gap for the Lynn Public Schools. So I just ask that you keep that perspective in mind. Further, it's the belief of the mayor and his chief financial officer that this amount will not only meet but exceed net school spending requirements. So this graphic, and it may be a little bit hard to read over there, this should serve as something as a reminder. Although some of the dates are different than those in the original iteration, in total, the idea here is to demonstrate a process that is collaborative, streamlined, data responsive, and communication-rich. From the development of the reflection forums to the multiple, to the multiple touchpoints with building leaders, we really wanted to, wanted the development of this budget to work, reflect work done with, not done to, to the extent that it can. That doesn't mean that every request or every wish would be granted or accommodated. It does mean that there was plenty of conversation around ideas and decisions. As you will recall, or as you know, we spent considerable time in partnership with the inclusive planning and leadership teams to develop core values as part of the strategic planning initiative. Before my team began deliberations, we spent time thinking about these, how these core values should drive and reflect in our decisions. I'm confident that where we landed reflects these values. And they are, if you can't see it up there, inclusiveness, shared responsibility, collaborative relationships, high expectations, and inspiring lifelong learning. From values, we pivoted to priority concepts as we began making decisions as to what can stay and what we cannot, what we can add and what we cannot accommodate. We really wanted to embrace the idea of equity, not necessarily equality. So as we look school to school, not every school is going to get the same thing. We really wanted to focus intensely on the needs of the schools and make decisions accordingly. So as, and you'll see this as I go forward, you'll notice that there are additions in some places, but perhaps not in others. That was really a function of thinking about need. Compliance, I mean, this never goes away. We want to make sure that the resources allow us, allow the district to meet the letter of the law or regulation. And this is really important, I mean, we want to make sure that kids are well-served, but we also want to be on the right side of the law. And so to the extent that the budget would allow us to move in that direction, we definitely move there. And then finally, we didn't want to, we wanted to embrace the district improvement goals that we developed this fall. Some of them, and leverage this budget to make them come alive to the extent that we could or that it was appropriate, and you'll hear more about that in just a second. But we wanted to make sure that we didn't lose sight of what we committed to doing in this forum for the benefit of students. So I was a principal for eight years, and this is sort of a wacky thing that I used to do. And I think I've done it in this space relative to, or tied to a different thing. But whenever I developed a budget and shared it with the faculty, I would always tie it to something that I thought they could remember. Sometimes it's a piece of art, sometimes it's an acronym. And for the development of this budget, we really feel like this acronym is appropriate and really reflects the decisions that we made. So as we think about our way forward, A, we are still creating that path forward, but we want to pave the path forward, priorities for accountability to our values and equity. So the budget itself, quickly, there are considerable additions to existing staff. 50.4 positions to be exact. This is, you know, at least in my short tenure here, the largest addition, but probably, you know, in many years, the largest addition in Lynn. It allows us to meet all contractual obligations related to transportation, step increases, lane changes, longevity. All of that is embraced in this budget and met in this budget. As we think about equity, this budget reflects a significant step forward in meeting the needs of students on individualized education plans, first and foremost, and moves the district closer to meeting standards for compliance. The additional positions reflect a balance of opening classrooms and increasing related service providers. For years, the related service provider to student ratios have made it extremely hard to meet special education timelines and service needs detailed in a student's plan. We have been stuck for a number of years in a perpetual cycle. Because we are unable to meet services on a student's plan, we must provide compensatory service, services at a later time at an additional cost to the district. This additional financial cost to the district pales in comparison to the detrimental impact this has on the education of these students with special needs, to say nothing of the related erosion of trust and partnership between the district and their families. In this budget, we are making a concerted effort to address this issue. And as you can see in this slide, I mentioned just a minute or two ago that the total number of added positions is 50.4. Almost 30 of them are in the special ed realm. Continuing along the equity theme, we are continuing to work to meet the needs of our English learners. You recall that there was a significant addition of ESL teachers in the FY 19 budget? There's a smaller addition in this year's budget. With the addition and a tweak to the approach to scheduling at the elementary level, we will nearly double the number of minutes of ESL instruction at the elementary level next year. Also of note in this budget is two Look Act-driven additions. Full Look Act implementation begins next school year, school year 1920. First, we have to, we have to build the capacity of the English learner education office, and we are doing so with the addition of an assistant director of English learner education. Bear in mind that this office is responsible for leading all matters related to servicing our Ls, which now totals identified 4,300, and then about another 3,000 of what we call Fels. Among other duties, this professional, the professional in this role will be responsible for development and training, development, training, implementation, and monitoring of required EL success templates, success templates which are going in next year. Development, training, implementation, and monitoring of all required L progress reports to measure progress towards language proficiency for all English learners. Supervision and evaluation of increased ESL staff, which is approaching 100. And then expansion of L program, L programming, including the two-way immersion program we plan to open in fall of '20. This budget also supports the addition of L elevation, ELL elevation. This is a platform similar to EZIEP. In keeping with the Look Act requirements, elevation provides us a platform to develop, store, and share compliance documents required for English learners, including L progress reports, which is driven by the Look Act, time of direct instruction, EL success templates, which is driven by the Look Act, and yearly L notification form, FEL monitoring, records of meetings, so forth and so on. At present, seven peer districts with similar populations of Ls are moving to this platform. We've talked a lot about the district improvement goal around relief at the middle school level around overcrowding. This budget allows us to provide some relief in the overcrowding at the middle school level. With your approval of this budget, the academy, the Discovery Academy, will service 305 students with a dynamic pre-vocational program. I'll provide you some specifics around the students who'll be attending in my superintendent's report, but I can tell you in this space that the students reflect the dynamic diversity of the district as a whole. The Lynn Tech administration is hard at work preparing the students to come to the academy this fall. And one change, that's actually 28, not 22. Those who know me well that I, they know that I'm a highly qualitative person, not a quantitative person. So that is 28, not 22. The district improvement goal around social and emotional learning. This budget allows for the purchase of a K-5 SEL curriculum. We've also budgeted funds to support the identification of a curriculum for middle and high school next year. We are fully aware of and committed to increasing staffing to support social and emotional needs. We did so in part through the operating budget and in part through the comprehensive school health services grant, which we were recently awarded. The grant offers $200,000 per year for 10 years. In your packets, I've included the NEASK report for classical. You can read it at your leisure, but in it, there is specific mention of the need for more social and emotional supports. Accordingly, this grant-funded, grant-supported feature will be placed at classical. Admittedly, we have much more work to do in this area, but this proposal reflects steps in the right direction. Relative to accountability, we are proposing a shift at Breed and Marshall that we believe will play a role in the improvement effort. Keep in mind that Breed and Marshall are both larger than Lynn Tech and approaching the enrollment sizes of classical and English. That said, there is far less content-specific leadership in supervision. Department heads will have, as we're proposing, special ed, ELA, and math, will have release time of .4 to supervise professionally, to develop, and evaluate teachers on their content teams. Both schools are eliminating the program specialist role and converting to the department ed model. This is a research-based approach that we believe will yield results. And lastly, we had that unfortunate experience this year around the virus, which impacted things that, you know, we don't even need to go back over at all, but it really hit us hard. Since their arrival on site, we've been working closely with and following the advice of our remediation consultant, Charles River Associates. We have made adjustments in the budget in response to that unfortunate experience related to the virus. The adjustments will not only protect against future breaches, but will serve as the building blocks for improved technology, for an improved technology department. Here, the thinking is to increase capacity and develop the leadership structure with plans to develop out from there. And then finally, you know, in true form, another graphic. I believe that we were able to make some substantive improvements with this budget. As I mentioned, there's a total of 50.6 new positions. 81% of those new positions are direct service or instruction positions. 19% are leadership roles. In my view, this is the right balance given our needs and the direction we're headed. I'm happy to take your questions, but I want you to know two things before you start. One, there was, in the budget book that you received, there were two program specialists at Callahan. That was a miscommunication between myself and Kevin. That program specialist will be at Tracy School for next year. And two, one of the first, when Dr. Latham prepared the budget last year, she had, I believe it was two TBDs to allow for flexibility in the beginning of the year for staffing. I used one of them as a social worker at English. That position will remain at English, so it does not reflect in there, but that position will be there next year. Happy to answer your questions.
Member Sata White.
Thank you for this presentation. The illustrations and just the hard work of breaking down what you believe to be extremely important and your, our goals that we've collaboratively put together, so I appreciate that. One of the things that I did speak when I was involved with, I guess, the first budget when Dr. Latham was here, was the difference between equity and equality. You know, we don't, every school doesn't need the same thing, so we need to see exactly what needs to be done. And I appreciate that you think the same way or you have that same mindset. I just want to make sure that we, we're all on the same page and we know what needs to be done in order for this to be enacted. So some of my questions have to do with the ELE. You're adding an assistant director of ELE, I'm assuming they're going to work in the curriculum?
In the English learner education office.
Okay.
Under Rania Caldwell.
Is this a newly created position that needs to go to the personnel subcommittee to create a posting? Or is this something that? Because I believe if it's a new position, it has to go, come from us for approval. And there's a few that seem to be new in this proposal.
So that's a great question, I don't know. The assistant director position exists currently. There are assistant directors currently employed for the Lynn Public Schools. Is there one with the title English learner education? No, there's not, so perhaps.
Okay. And the total staff of 50.4, that does not include the 28 positions for the Discovery Academy? Because these aren't newly created positions, they're just moved around, or is that number included?
That number's included.
So there'll be 29 special ed FTE, full-time employees, plus the 28 positions?
Some of them are, I'm sorry, some of them are at, there's some crossover there.
Okay, so adding all the numbers together, it might not work, okay, so it makes sense, thank you. That's what I have with regards to the presentation, I appreciate it. And I didn't get the projected class sizes in my book?
When do we normally do that? When do we normally do that?
Sometime at this time, once you have them, you would present them during one of your meetings.
Okay. I can prepare to have those for you, I hope, for the thirteenth?
Thank you.
Member Nicholson, then Member Castellanos.
Thank you. So we submitted questions and definitely answered some of them already, so yeah. Thank you again for the proposal. I find this document helpful to read in the way it's set up and proposed, so we appreciate that. And for the presentation as well, I think sharing the processes and priorities is a great way to set the table for the conversation, to pave the road for the conversation. In terms of, my first question was about the net school spending. You mentioned that the mayor's office and his CFO had talked about the net school spending requirements. I just want to make sure that those conversations have included our finance team and that we are all sort of on board with that, with that analysis and those calculations.
Yeah. So I think the collaboration between the city CFO and our school business administrator has been really rich over the course of the year. They're in regular communication with one another. And then Kevin and I will speak, and the CFO and the mayor will speak, and I meet with the mayor once monthly. So there's a lot of conversation and interaction around, you know, around what's going on. So I, I mean, and maybe he can speak to it more, I think the mayor would like to. I'm not feeling like we're related to, you know, the numbers around net school spending, things of that nature, like we're in the dark.
I think, I think there's been real collaboration. I even know the other night Kevin and Mike were talking after the meeting, and I know that's a consistent, and I think just as well, the CFO is in a lot of, I don't want to say constant contact, but consistent contact with Desi related to net school spending. So we're, I think the collaboration, communication is both between the schools and the city side, CFO and Kevin and the superintendent and I, as well as through Desi. We want to make sure that we're meeting our requirements and, and I don't know if you know the number, Kevin, but I think that there is a number that we're over at this point, and I know that is always in flux, so it's tough to say what the number is.
Yeah, it's always-
But the commitment is to be the-
It's one point nine.
It's one point nine.
He's projecting, the CFO's projecting one point nine. I mean, some of the numbers, as we all know, are based on that health insurance, so that's, it's always, could be a little in flux, but we've met exactly, we talked after the city council meeting, we talked about a forty-five minutes afterwards. We're going to be meeting again next week. So there's been constant communication, because as this budget continues to go through the process, this, you know, may be some tweaking here or there, and they've been willing to work with us, so.
Right.
You know, it's been, it's been a good collaboration this year.
Good. Yeah, I mean, I totally understand that some, particularly on the net school spending requires making projections and assumptions, and I just want to make sure that we're all, we're all making the same predictions and all have the same assumptions about what's going to happen. So that's, that's good to hear. Thank you. So for the, I had a couple of specific questions to elementary schools. I mean, it might make sense for us to do some of these offline, or-
We've answered all of them. I can share them with you, or if there's something that you want to dive into now?
You have answers already.
We do.
Okay.
Just haven't had a chance to get them to you.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, I don't want to sort of draw this out too long. We could, we could circulate that among the committee and then respond, and, you know, people could read it at their leisure, and then if we have follow-up questions, next time, we could, we could do that. What do people think? Would you rather go through them now?
Well, I think so, I think it could go both ways, and I think we can definitely answer questions tonight.
Yeah.
I think if there are answers to some of them, you can take a look at them. Specific questions is definitely, we can talk about them all night if that's the case, but we also have the thirteenth to have some of those discussions, and if those answered questions that you think will be answered, unanswered, we have another, at least a couple of meetings to address that. Doesn't mean we don't get to any questions you want to answer tonight, but I think it's a good point, Jared, and I think Member Capola had a-
I'm just having a question because we were all, you know, supposed to send them into you. And does that, is that like a violation of the open meeting law? I mean, not sending them into you is fine, but then if you're just going to send us all the answers, does that go into that area of, you know, in other words, we should be addressing it at open meetings? We asked for the questions, we sent them all in, and rather than send them all back to us like that, I'm just concerned about the open meeting law. That's all I'm asking.
Good question.
There's going to be a deliberation of the membership. Yes, it has to be done in an open meeting. If you're just responding to questions, specific questions, I don't see that as a violation.
Okay.
But it has to be discussed, so far as implemented, it has to be discussed in the open meeting.
So, so I guess to follow up, John, and I'm happy to get other questions. So if it responded directly to questions that have been asked, and it's informational, not deliberative?
Right.
That, that's, that's okay, but if it gets into deliberation based on changes or other things?
Exactly.
And, and so that would be where we'd be in, we may be in conflict on open meeting.
Just, just keep in mind-
Member Sadowite.
It'd probably be open to FOIA, you know, that we're communicating between the two, so freedom of information, it's, it's, it's possible, but we had someone come in and spoke during the open mic, and one of the things that she begged us for was transparency and for an open discussion on this budget. So I don't want to not allow that to happen, especially if it's been brought to our attention today. So even if it's three or four questions, if they have the answer, it should be-
Yeah, I'm happy to run through them and tick through them.
Or is there a way to actually submit those answers publicly to the full committee as part of the public process?
As long as it's part of the public record.
Well, we can go individually, and if we, if there's concerns, as Member Capola's-
How about I just start talking?
Let's do it, yeah, yeah, yeah. So, I mean-
Here we go.
I think it feels safer to me that-
Yeah, all right, so the first one I had, I had, I had someone about the elementary, about the secondary, and then by department, like basically going through the same format of the budget. So the first one in the elementary was about the Callahan adding a program specialist. You answered that. The second was about the decrease in intervention pairs at Ford and Tracy.
So those weren't intervention pairs per se. These were, so Ford and Tracy Ks, as you know, were at ECC effective, I think it was twenty thirteen, or some time ago. And these paraprofessionals were responsible, had a responsibility around transportation, safety, getting the students on the bus, getting the students off the bus. We, we're not at all marginalizing the importance of the service that those professionals provided, but we're thinking that we can address that in a different way. So that's why we-
Like getting on and off the bus?
Right.
So were they there all, were they there all day and then, okay, okay. All right. And then, so I noticed all the, all the schools had a similar amount of increase in school supplies.
Yep.
At the elementary level, it seemed like Carrington had a higher amount. Is there a plan for enrollment?
Yeah, so at the top left of that budget page, there is an enrollment, and that's the February first enrollment. You have to pick something. And there was a five-dollar increase, correct me if I'm wrong, five-dollar increase per child, so it, I think it was forty dollars per student. Forty dollars per student, so you just take forty, multiply times that number at the top left, and that's how you get that.
Got it.
That number.
And then the, the new kindergarten teachers at Ingles?
That's ECC. And actually, here, I have for you, because there was a question around like trying to find where all the ECC classrooms went. I have that document for you, but remember that the Ford Ks that were, that were being serviced at ECC will now be serviced at Ingles. And the Tracy Ks that were served at ECC will now be serviced at Sewell Anderson. And there was some movement related to that, but I have that document here for you.
Okay. And then Ingles is adding a reading teacher, bringing it to five, which seems relatively high compared to other elementary schools.
Okay.
Yeah, so they're, they're looking at an addition of almost a hundred, or perhaps more than a hundred students.
They'd be working with the Ks, the reading teachers. Okay, got it. And then the Sewell Anderson had some loss in teachers. Is that enrollment-based or?
So that's not a loss in teachers. That's, they had some special education programs, you can find it on that document there, that moved elsewhere. And, and to that point, I just want to go back to, because there was a question around the movement of special ed classrooms, and I can't speak intelligently about the history of that. All I can tell you is, relative to what we're proposing for, for next year, the idea was really to find homes where students can stay, all the way to fifth grade. So we're not anticipating, there's a lot of movement this year with the closure of ECC, right? Removing, I believe it was nine classrooms, nine special ed classrooms out of ECC to different places. And then there were four, I believe, at Sewell that were, that were moved to other places. We were really thoughtful and intentional about where those classrooms went with the hopes of not having to, we, we don't want students making lots of transitions and moving around, so the hope is that they're going to stay there.
Okay. All right, so for the secondary schools, the, it looked like Breed had one less program specialist?
That's related to the, flip to the department head model.
Okay, so that, that-
Breed and Marshall both reduced their program specialist.
Okay.
To accommodate, because now you have, you know, whereas program specialist, one administrator, you're now going to have three, but in content-specific areas. So that was actually the principal's proposal, that we can reduce this position and go, go with the three department heads.
Okay. So I asked about the department head positions of Breed and Marshall, I got that. I mean, so Pickering doesn't have one, and that's because of enrollment, I presume? Are they going to, I mean, some of the department head role, though, is about content, which is going to be relevant even at a smaller school.
Mm-hmm.
How is that going to be addressed?
Well, I, I mean, I think this goes back to the equity equality scenario. Breed and Marshall are large needy students, not needy students, needy schools. Pickering, and I'm not saying at all that they don't need, have needs, but they've got a really solid model in place with a math coach who's been there for, for a number of years, and they have a program specialist. So they weren't proposing to, yep, they, they wanted to stay the way they were, and we were comfortable leaving them that way.
Okay. The All-Star program is losing its non-salary funding?
No, so remember that we have a partnership with DA Blodgett around the All-Star program. They give us grant funds that goes through the police department, seized funds that go right to, right to support that program. So those funds support that program, not, they do not go to Project YES, so that's why you see that difference.
So in FY nineteen, there was a thirty thousand dollar allocation to the All-Star?
Not needed.
It's not needed there.
Okay, so what, what happened with that money last year?
Breed's.
I don't think it was utilized.
Yeah, we'd have to, yeah, we'd have to look at it, but it wasn't utilized because they had the Jonathan Blodgett money for all field trips materials, the non-salary pieces that funds both during the school year and the summer program, whereas Project, Project YES doesn't get that. And the salaries are funded out of Title I.
Right, okay.
Or actually Foray.
Okay. Does the ES program, do they, in the All-Star program, do they serve a similar number of kids? Are they, yeah?
Yes, yes. They have very similar programs. They focus differently. Breed All-Stars focuses on substance abuse prevention. Project YES focuses on-
Initially, it was on gang involvement.
Gang involvement, either, thank you.
Have, have we, so I mean, obviously, there's similar, or similarities in the student populations.
And their budgets are equal.
And their budgets are equal?
Yeah. They're just funded differently.
Different funding sources.
Okay, okay. Have we done any sort of, is there any sort of analysis that we could do about comparing the results that we're getting from those two programs, if they're?
Yeah, so, excuse me. Each year, the, I actually don't know what the title is, Lauren and Tim, the leaders of the programs, collect data around attendance, around discipline for the students who are involved, around grades, and then, and I believe, don't quote me on this, I believe they actually surveyed the students also. So each year, they do that. They, they collect empirical data on the success of the program.
And compare notes, do they? The Tim and?
Oh, Tim and Lauren work very closely together. They, they actually spend a lot of time talking about what's happening in the, in the other person's program.
Okay, yeah, maybe somewhere in the future, we could get enough, yeah.
How do the requirements of being funded through Title I or Title Foray, because I think it's a combination of the two, they have to provide to us a proposal of what their program will, you know, will entail, what the budget will be, and data to show how the program ran. So we certainly will have that.
Thank you. So moving to special education, the, the new out-of-district program specialists that we added, what's the sort of plan with that?
So the plan there is thinking long-term around addressing the, I mean, someone else had asked a question about the additional amounts of funding going to out-of-district tuition. We really want to bring that down, and we were of the belief that we needed people who are dedicated to the task of working with, working both in the district and with out-of-district providers, to figure out ways to bring students back. And we felt that this needed to be, or frankly, it is a year-long position, so that's why it's at a program specialist level.
Okay. And at the same time, the IEP chairperson position decreased. Is that a reallocation in terms of priorities, or what's the sort of the thinking there?
Oh, it's the change in those two positions.
Yeah, yeah, so we're using this, instead of, right, 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 yep. Okay. And the parent liaison, is that, that's become a full-time role? Okay.
Full-time role.
So the additional eight fifty, eight hundred and fifty thousand out-of-district tuition, how does that compare in previous year increases? And is that, is that in line with what we inspect, given, given the increase in number of students?
Yeah, so, I mean, there's always some guesswork involved with adding or increasing your out-of-district tuition, but, I mean, it's, it's been trending in the same direction, I'd say, for, for a while. But, but where we anchor the decision in empirical data is how many students are in the pipeline for an out-of-district placement. And, I mean, that number, that number reflects that.
Okay, and we're addressing, the idea is that we're using these program specialists as a way to address this, this issue?
That's right. We've got to get that under control.
Okay.
EZIEP?
Yeah.
It's, 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 it is the online platform where the individualized ed plan lives.
Okay.
I could say more about it if you'd like, but-
Sure.
Do you want me to? Hang on, hang on, hang on.
We, we actually used to fund that, and we tried to use our existing systems and try to keep everything on the one platform, and it's not working out properly, so we're reinstituting the, the program. And I know Felicia's here, she could probably tell you exactly what it does, but it's a way to track all the IZPs through us.
What I was going to add is not, you know, intimate details about the, the program itself, but the reason, part of the reason why we're, we're going back to it is the, the current student management platform, you know, with the virus this year, that actually took time away that we could have been training to, on the new platform. So not, we, there's just no way that we'd be ready to, to engage in that new platform for next year, so we got to stay put with what we have.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, part of the reason why I ask is related with, to that, we talked in the attendance conversation about the software we use for that and updating that, and now we're adopting this elevation program, just understanding sort of our holistic strategy in terms of the, the services that we're using, so that we're, we're happy with the decisions that we make. And that was actually my next question about the ELLs. You talked about the, the new position for, for the elevation. So you mentioned other districts are using this. Are there other providers that we've looked at, like what, what makes us choose this one?
This is the one that I, you know, frankly, I think it's the ease of use, and it's a known entity. Are there others out there? I actually don't know, but this is the one with which there's the most familiarity out there, the most experience with, and instead of going and looking and trying to find something that no one's got any experience with and trying to leverage that one, and people like, you know, and it does precisely what the Look Act requires us to do, it didn't make sense for us to try to reinvent the wheel on that one.
Yeah, I mean, I, I understand that, and I think that might be the right decision. I think that if, if, if someone, particularly in the ELL department, had the capacity to at least talk to a couple of other vendors, not, not necessarily to change our mind, but she did, okay.
Yeah, she did. We don't ever purchase anything unless we- We don't ever purchase anything unless we've looked at multiple venues.
Okay.
And as a matter of fact, in the student information platform that Dr. Tattwiler was talking about in terms of the special ed issues, the same issues kind of fall with the ELL, they have an ELL component that is not fully developed. Most of these companies, especially in this area, don't have a fully developed platform, like, it, they're selling it, but it doesn't have everything we need.
And they're adapting it, whereas this program was designed.
This was designed for it.
To serve us Ls.
Okay.
So she did look at multiple programs.
Yeah, 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 all right, good. So the curriculum and instruction budget, there was a reduction in the number of math coaches?
Yep, that's Breed and Marshall in, in service of the department head model.
So instead of having district coaches, they're gonna be?
We wouldn't need them, because now we'll have department heads.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense. So there were a few increases in the social emotional learning, I mean, maybe we can take these together, but like, so what, like, we're, we're adding the professional development stipends, the contracted services, and, and supplies, supplies and materials, what kind of is the, the?
Do you wanna talk about the ambassadors program?
Yeah, so we're developing.
You might have a mic there.
Apologize. We're developing a student ambassadors program that isn't just for Ls, but it's, but a target population is Ls, and it's about developing a student body that are gonna be leaders and mentors for, for students, and, and being a welcoming agent in our schools, and also for, for those students, developing them as leaders. And there'll be a mentor who's a teacher for those, for those students, but this program will especially service our L population.
That's great.
Another piece of that, as I mentioned in the presentation, in that professional development stipends, under that umbrella is the, um, diverse group of educators who are gonna be looking for a new SEL curriculum for middle school and high school.
Got it, okay. Um, for the, so now that technology, you, I think you answered these, I asked about the, the two new positions and the, the software. So are we, so we're getting service now from CRV on the recovery, and we're choosing CrowdStrike as the software provider, can you tell me a little bit about that decision?
Kevin, do you wanna speak to that?
Yes, they looked at multiple vendors, and that was actually the best price and the best options, 'cause they can get quite expensive, I mean, one of them was gonna be a half million dollars, so, you know, we, we looked at it, they were able to provide what exactly we need to do it, it's, you know, it's not the Cadillac, but it's definitely gonna be something that we need the extra body to, a body in the office for, or less to be sitting monitoring this, 'cause that's part of the thing, they're gonna have to show us how to constantly monitor the traffic, so it'll be monitoring traffic in and out of the district to look for, you know, this'll kind of give you, hey, by the way, you're gonna need to look at this, you know what I mean? It doesn't always stop everything, but it gives you a warning, so you can't just let it sit there. So Dan and Tim went through multiple vendors, all different ad vendors in all the time, but there's only a few that really do it, so we had CrowdStrike, Common Black, and there was a third one, and this came with the best price for about what we really need to do to at least get something moving in the right direction, yeah.
Okay, yeah, I mean, you, you might remember, we talked about this a year ago with cybersecurity, and it's, it's something that really is concerning, I mean, you see it happening, it happened here, it's happening around the country where local governments are vulnerable and have sensitive information, and so I, I, I think, I think it's really important that we're addressing this risk.
Quickly, I will address in the superintendent's report, they've given us a draft, um, report, and I'm pleased to announce that there was no information compromise, I'll say more in my superintendent's report.
That's great, that's great. Um, the increase in duplicators, maintenance, and finance?
Yes, what happens is, it's been fifteen years, we used to get duplicated price on a maintenance contract for three years, free maintenance and free service, so that's, those days are over, we're going back to the old days where actually you pay a fee, but you also pay for maintenance, it's a click count, it's point zero zero five, so it's like a half a cent for every copy you make. So we have to, so we're gonna get, we get bills quarterly for every machine in the district, and they, they take the reads off how many copies we made and send us a bill, so that price is gonna reflect that click count that we're gonna have to pay quarterly throughout the year. Color copies is a little more expensive to, to count.
All right, well, noted for our next meeting.
Chopping, we gotta stop chopping trees down.
Um, okay, I think you answered, answered the one about the TBD teachers, um, did you?
Uh, well, there were two for this fiscal year, I've budgeted for four next year.
Okay, great.
So that does give us flexibility going into the year, and I should say, on that note, I mean, obviously, if there's, you know, a registrat, registration spike in the summer in a particular school, we need to open a new classroom, obviously, one of them would go there, but we're really committed to the social and emotional piece, and if there is not a need to, you know, around a classroom opening or something of that nature, we really intend to use those TBDs that way.
Great. Um, and then the, the new coaches in the athletics budget?
Actually, there's, there's, we're not, there aren't, there were some adjustments made, there hadn't been any adjustments, and we were finding that the, they were all weren't getting the same salary, so we sat down.
Oh, just pay, okay.
It's just a, it's uniform, every school has, we have a nice sheet, every school has exactly an allocation, so this just reflects evening the playing field and exactly what we're paying. That, that cost is what we're paying for coaches this year.
Okay, and then just the last thing I say, if it would be possible, I think it'd be helpful, I, I thought the presentation in the beginning was really helpful in providing the priorities in the overview, and I think it's really noteworthy that we're hiring the number of people that we are, increasing the headcount by the amount we are, I think it's really helpful for us conceptually to think about what we're doing, thinking about that breakdown of where those positions are going, so if you, if you could kind of provide a summary of, you know, and, and showing, showing the overlap that, that Mr. Satter was talking about, like, these are both discovery and special ed and that kind of thing, kind of, that kind of breakdown would be helpful.
To that point, the mayor and I were talking right before tech's graduation, I, I also think, I mean, it would, it would be a heavy lift, to be clear, but I, I think it would be really helpful for you or whoever decides to take a look at the budget book, to think about a, you know, something of a, an overview for each tab, like, what is it, what's different in this, in this particular section, what is it that we're attempting to do, how does it relate to our district improvement goals, our, our values, or, or whatever, or whatever? But it would be, makes it much easier to go, oh, okay, so special education, I see here what the differences are and what they're trying to accomplish, rather than going, okay, in fiscal year nineteen, this is what they did in fiscal year twenty. So, I mean, he asked me to think about it, but when the mayor asks you to do something, probably better do it.
Great, well, thank you, and I, I thought that was really helpful, I appreciate it, and thanks for everybody listening.
I think we're gonna go to Member Castellanos, Member Capola, Member Gately, and then Member Ford.
Thank you so much.
Sorry, John.
Sorry.
(laughing) Trying to keep track of the...
I won't go all, well, I won't, yeah, one more, we have another meeting that we could discuss. I have, so I'll start with saying thank you for, you know, breaking down the budget the way you did, the district improvement goals, and I like the way forward, the priorities of accountability, 'cause I think, I think when we look at the goals that we've developed, I, I think it was comprehensive and collaborative, being a part of the district-wide strategic planning committee, I bet I was a part of that, and I felt, as, I went as, as a social worker, and I had a seat at the table, and alongside of me was multiple stakeholders from nonprofits to state agencies, and it was, it was, well, I was really, I was, I really appreciated that. I got to take part in that process, and it really, it really showed me, you know, what we need in terms of priorities, and I, not to be biased, but, and I don't, I'm not gonna needlepick the budget, 'cause I did pick what schools didn't have social workers and what schools had social, so Fallon, for example, that's one of my, I worked with Fallon on the basis, and I didn't see a, a social worker in the line item, and what, was there a decrease? Was there, is it?
They're called clinical directors.
So they, so they are clinical directors, okay.
Yeah, they're social workers.
Good, I appreciate that, well, that's a check there, but another issue I have, hold on, excuse me, what, so I have actually, I had, I had an email that I wanna, I wanna read, it was actually, it was, it was a well-put-together email from a civics class, eighth grade, and I'm gonna read it, 'cause I told them I would. This is, Dear Mr. Castellanos, in our grade eight social studies class, my peers and I currently working on an action civics project dealing with the topic of mental health. Based upon our research, we have come to the conclusion that the Lynn Public Schools District is in need of more funding for school social workers. Mental health issues and its negative effects if left untreated, such as suicide, bullying, et cetera, are a huge problem for our community. We believe that funding for more school social workers could greatly help prevent mental health problems. In our school of over one thousand three hundred and forty students, this is Thurgood Marshall, Thurgood Marshall Middle School has only one school social worker available. This is startling to us. Our school social worker does a fantastic job, but on any given day, she sees anywhere between ten and thirty students, this makes it difficult at times to truly handle the needs of all students at our school. As a school committee member, we are requesting that you help us address this issue of budget and money for more, more social workers in schools throughout the city of Lynn. We all, we have already a petition featured and a hundred signatures, a hundred Lynn residents who are also calling upon, upon your aid. If you are interested in scheduling a meeting, which I definitely reached out, because I felt very compelled when I got this message, to really do some more homework on this issue as we prepared for budget, and I did, you know, when, when we look at the, and also being part of the curriculum subcommittee, I got to take a look at myself and Member Gately, the, the curriculum that's being rolled out, and some of what I noticed in the, in all that money that we're spending, we need social workers to really, to really fully effectively operate that curriculum, so it looks like we're spending all this money on a K through five, and if I, if I read it correctly, this is a district improvement goal, this is a second goal, we spent all that money, but yet we don't have a, those social workers, and, and I understand we're working on a thing, but I understand the, the, I understand the budget allocations, I understand it deeply, and I, I just really feel that, and I heard that we do have, and you, you discussed it briefly, that we, we have a, a comprehensive health service grant, and we have Title One money that we're, we are working to, to fill those line items, but I think these are very, these are very important line items to really, really invest in, to really, to, to discuss this in a, in a comprehensive way, in terms of budget, and when you look at, for example, we have our school supplies that keep going up, Marshall's example, their school supplies are very high, and what I looked across, some of my research, 'cause I am a student, I'm a lifelong student, I'm a, I, I love to learn, and some of the stuff that I found in my own research was the use of PTAs and PTOs to help develop those, those, those cost-sharing, you know, abilities, and to, to look at the out-of-the-box ways of saving money, and I understand that we are, we're in the beginning stages, this is our first year, this is our first budget together, this is something that we gotta work on, and I, I'm here to, to bring to light that that's something that we need to work on, and it's not just, I, I'm speaking on, we had students reach out to me, that's not the first time I, I, you know, I heard, oh, we need more social workers.
Yep.
'Cause as a social worker myself, we're naturally, we're problem solvers, we're people with high compassion, and we wanna help, those are community liaisons as well to, to find the, to, to, to really look at trauma-informed practices, I think social works, social workers, instinctively, that's what they represent, and I think that's something that needs to, to, when you look at a, a child's adolescent development, bullying and mental health issues are, are a real, a real issue in our middle schools, and social workers are over caseload. The high school as well, we have one social worker, he does a fantastic job, and sometimes, and I hear the caseloads that some of these social workers are seeing, similar to teachers who are getting overcrowded classrooms, is that feasible? How is this impacting the learner? How is it impacting the equity? When we talked, I'm glad we, you pointed it out, because equity is something that's, something for me, I've been pushing, I've been pushing and fighting against inequities in social justice for some time now, and I think this is something that I think I feel so strongly about, and, and I know that you share that, and I know you, and I know the district is moving in, in that way, but could you please explain to me what that process is gonna be like?
Yeah.
Please.
Yeah, so, I got that letter too, and I went and visited the class, and they gave a wonderful presentation on why they think this is such an important issue, and I hope they now understand that I share their concern deeply, but when we talked about, you know, when you have a finite amount of money, and not one, but five really important things, which one do you choose, right? You know, or, or, you know, how many things can you tackle within a finite, with a finite budget? And so, I mean, and they pressed me, so if, if you get a chance to go, they will press you to make a commitment to, and then they'd done their research, they said it's, the, the clinical models, one to two hundred, one social worker per two hundred and fifty students, you know, we need more here, we need five here, and I told them, it's gonna take some time. So I said, this is, this is the kind of thing that is not gonna, you know, this sort of change will not be an event, it will be a process, and it'll happen over time. What we, what we, and this is why I led with this in the very beginning, what we really wanted to do this year is, is, is substantively address the special ed concern. Within that, however, there are clinical directors who provide support for students on IEPs who, you know, who need social and emotional support, so we are, you know, there is the addition of that staff, but with respect to, I would love to get to a place where, you know, we're at that model of one, the ratio of one to two hundred and fifty, it's just gonna take some time.
I'm, I'm gonna continue.
And I, and I'd just like to follow up, related to the budget, we talked earlier, the number we're looking at in Lynn is forty-seven million that were underfunded, that number comes from, from the state, I mean, we're over a billion dollars a year, that was, so the reality of what we're facing, why the superintendent and Sheila, Sheila O'Neil and I, as many, as many, many other mayors and others were at the State House for the hearing early on, and continue to push strongly for some kind of resolution related to the House, Senate, and the administration funding of, of education, is that, that these tough questions are being asked in communities like Lynn, Lynn in particular for us, and the reality is we don't have the dollars to do what we need to do to educate the kids in the community. So, I mean, I mean, that, that is a reality that we're also facing, so, doesn't mean we can't make the right decisions here on the budget, but I think we have to understand clearly that that's something that is a priority for all of us to continue to fight to get those dollars.
And obviously, I bring this up, and I wouldn't come without a solution of my own, I think I, I did my homework on this, when we talk about dollars, right, we have a coordinator, a private ship partnership position, correct? Enhancing our co-op internship programs, we have the school social work from Simmons, we have BU, BC, Salem State, North Shore Community College, we have the stock all around us, so I asked, so part of this question is, what I did, I went out to a lot of universities that I am close with, and I asked them, if we're an urban district, and we lack resources, but we need this certain position, the first thing they said was enhance your partnerships. I had reports from DESI, from multiple people that's saying that we're not aggressively pursuing these partnerships, which, it's, it's vital investment, not to, and it's, it's an, it's an investment that prevents us from having this conversation, like, oh, if, what if, 'cause what happened, so kid time is long time, kid time is very important, and that's something, when we look at, I know social workers that need hours, there's, there's programs that would support us and, and help cultivate the, the processes, that educate our own system on how to really aggressively make sure that we have those positions, it's really, it's, it's, it's for me, and we look at the, obviously, I'm not gonna go into all of it, but we have eligibility issues, we're not eligible for many grants out there, and that's something that I've, I've, I've been very well-groomed in, in terms of that process, with grant process and locating grants, and it's a very, it's a very competitive process, and it's something that, in, in development, it's, it shouldn't have to be superintendent, it shouldn't have to be your responsibility, this is a, this is, this, that, that process is very competitive, and it requires a centralized system. Certain planning departments in cities have people full-time just going at grants, Boston Police Department have a grant writer just strictly every day writing in grants, you see the numbers of monies that are pulled in, because they're there focused on grants. What happens when we don't have that level of focus, we miss our opportunities, I've heard it this year already, or we didn't have, we had two weeks to prepare and write to, to submit a grant, and there's hard work, that's hard work that's being done, I don't minimize none of that, so don't get me wrong, when I say, hey, we're not doing what we, we... So don't get me wrong, when I say, hey, we're not doing what we, we, we could do better. And that's important to, to put to the table when I hear, oh, we don't have money, we have no resources. We, well, listen, when we say that we need social workers, we need to think outside the box. We have it right here. We have, I have people, universities that I, I, I literally, I see it happening in Lawrence, lol. I ha- I see it happening. We need to hop, we need to stop being in the trail and getting ahead.
So, uh, I will say that that was one thing that we, we talked about at the class.
Yeah.
So there's one school to my knowledge, um, that leverages that university partnership, and that's FECTO around social emotional supports. And I told the students that that's something that as a district we need to expand on. I hear you.
I appreciate that, thank you. Um, also, so I, I got one more question. So Marshall, between Marshall and Breed, um, why does Marshall have a ELL council and, and Breed doesn't? Why is it, I know Breed has three regular councils, as if I read it right, I see a ELL, sorry, a L council.
Bilingual, yeah.
So is that because of, I know, and I know individually, is that demographics or what, what's that?
Can you look at, uh, Breed's page, they both should.
And I have one more follow-up after that, sorry, then I'll be done.
Just one more, just one more.
Same councils though?
Same.
Same number or is it?
It may just be coded different.
Okay, that's, so it's the same number, but?
Yeah, they each have three, they have two and one.
Thank you. And, um, one more piece, um, for transportation. So we have a, we have a, a, uh, an attendance initiative, right? That's been rolled out very, very, I think it's been effective. I seen the efforts, um, it's, it's very, as, it's in my day-to-day work. I chase kids down the commons to get them to FECTO Larry. I pick kids up every day beyond my work hour, I pick kids up, drop kids off. Um, and these are kids right on the cuff of attendance policies, issues. They, they, they're passing this year. I had a kid today walk across the stage. Um, it was very, it was very moving for me, it was at FECTO Larry. Uh, he's, he, these kids face some extreme adversity. Um, transportation is one of the biggest factors I seen in these kids getting to school. Lot of kids on that radius cuff that, a- a- and the, and I, I've heard staff say, whoa, I used to walk to school. They gotta get up and go to school. Well, it sounds good until these kids are not going to school and they're filling out. And then what happens? They become sixteen years old and they don't no longer meet the CRA, uh, status. So then the ch- the children requiring assistance is not effective. So then what happens to that sixteen-year-old kid? And they don't have parents. Oh, they have to go and pay rent and pay bills. These, and this, 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 okay, this goes back to, now I'm gonna bring it back, I'll bring myself back. We spend almost, um, when I'm looking at the FY twenty budget, transportation for homelessness, and I, and I respect it cause I'm in, I'm in the field, I see it's eight hundred thousand, um, eight hundred thousand, and I know DCF plays five hundred and fifty thousand. So on my, on my other hat, we've had a conversation about, um, w- we need to assist, I think, developing a, a, a program that helps students get their licenses. I think permits, the process of, of, when we talk about equity, the first time you get a license, I, I meet kids a- a- and my work that don't have a license, don't have the, 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 the care in the world to get a license. That license, that, just like your first job, your chances increase with a license. That independence is so, so vital. To get their permits, to get their license means that they can have a possibility to go get a job and get transportation. Transportation is vital. Kids go to school, right? I see myself, again from my own experiences, you got someone, and I had, I had, I had a child in a foster home who received transportation every day for six months. Grades were marvelous, the grades were beautiful. This girl never, never missed a day of school. She got re-unified. She's now failing all her grades because of attendance. She's one point seven miles away from our house. What are we gonna do? She's sixteen years old. She doesn't know what getting a license is because her mom doesn't have a license, no father around, lives in a broken home. This is something that's real, all across the district. The first license, I think that, I think, a- 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 and when we talk about the, the, the total transportation, if I'm looking for, it's eight million dollars, four hundred and sixty-nine thousand, that's a lot of money. How about let's educate folks on, on, and, and we got the MBTA bus passes, I love that. They give twenty thousand dollars, that's good. But how about we figure out, hey, MBTA, if you guys are getting money from us, let's say, how about, how about you help, try to help our kids get a permit? Tutor, some kids are terrified, you think they're terrified about taking the MCAS or taking a ma- going to school? Some kids are petrified to go take a permit exam. How can we enhance that? So I stand in front of you with this, you know, and, and I respect the number, I respect the work that you guys put in. But these are real life issues. I live this every damn day and I see it. I see the aftermath. I live it, I live it with them. I live it with the families, I live it and I see it. And people care. I think we bring this to light, I think the community will take this in, and I think this is another out-of-the-box idea. And I see, it's a, it's, 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 it's a highlight. When we talk about equity, when you talk about, when you talk about your strategic plan and your attendance initiative and a priority, transportation, and you can, that you look at that process that, that we, we're taking, we can make something happen there. I don't know, that's something that I think is really important to really figure out. When you look at first-generation low-income students, you see the odds are ready against them. Sometimes that might be the chance to get them out. You never know what you can do with a little spark of hope, huh? A little of us need some help sometimes. Thank you. I'll save the rest for the next meeting.
Member Capola?
Um, I'm gonna stay under the sped, um, spot here. I, I really appreciate the increase in that because, um, I know myself, I get a lot of calls. The ed plans don't meet the timeframe, it's always a concern and a problem. And so I appreciate that. Um, the question I have though is, the one that's the program specialist sped out of district. So we added two there and we took away from the IEP chairpersons. Are they gonna write the IEPs, those, those, um, program specialists for the out of districts? Is that what's gonna happen?
No, the out of district, um, placements usually write IEPs. They'll coordinate meetings and go to the meetings, but now they, they typically don't write the IEPs. They just put care of the meetings and kind of everything.
Okay, so then why are we reducing the IEP chairpersons then? If, if the outer district does it anyways and we're adding on to there, which I don't have a problem adding on the staff under the sped because I think it's really important. But I'm wondering, that's like, we get so many complaints in regards to not meeting the, you know, sometimes maybe it's right to the day and a parent doesn't think so, you know? But a lot of times, we're not meeting it, we really aren't. So why are we reducing that by two? I, I was thinking that that was gonna be compensated up top, but it, it really isn't. Or in another line, is it, that's the only one that I see writing IEPs.
So the, the activities or responsibilities that Ms. Jamerson just described would fall on another chairperson's responsibility?
I understand that, but we're here, most of my calls on outer district placements, they're all within our system. That they're not getting call back, that, you know, they're not, the testing dates aren't on time, you know, all of that. And I, and, and I also understand that's why we're adding, you know, help up on the top part because, yeah, we didn't, we don't have enough speech, you know, people, but that says speech therapy, but, um, so that's, I just don't understand, if we're already having a problem with the IEPs not getting done, why are we cutting that by two? And my other question in there is the vision impairment, what does that mean? Is that an actual classroom or is that somebody that works with the visually impaired? Because, you know, in the, we have had in our warrants, a lot of money paid outside to Perkins School for the Blind. You know, um, getting services. So I'm wondering, you know, h- it, where in that budget is, is fixing that?
So to speak to the, to the chairs, so currently we have thirteen chairs and two of them already act as out-of-district chairs. So it's, it's not really that this workload is now gonna fall on the other eleven chairs left. Also in the budget, so now the chair scheduled the meeting for the school psychologist. So also in the budget, there's an addition of two, um, well, we have one school psychologist now and then we'll have another one that's added to the budget for next year. So, well, next year we'll have eleven school psychologists and eleven chairs. So it matches up as a better marriage for the scheduling cause now we have like two or three chairs scheduling for one person and there's a lot of conflict, there's a lot of issues, there's over-scheduling. Like the, the, the school psychologists were scheduled to like six or seven meetings a week and there's just no way that they can do that. So we're looking at this to say that there's a better balance, so it's not like this work is gonna go on to the other chairs.
Okay, now the vision impairment one, is that a, um, is that just someone giving services?
Services, yes.
Services, okay. Did we have that person this past year?
No.
So even though it shows like on the line, we really didn't have anybody?
No, we had to outsource that.
Yeah, okay, so are there any other things on that line? You know, that, you know, they say two jobs for like, uh, I don't know, let's see. Are, are any, any of the other lines as we look down here weren't filled?
For this last school year, this current school?
Right, cause like that money was in on that line. So I think all of us sitting at the table think, okay, there's a person there, working there. But it, it was there, but it never got filled. Sorry, I'm sorry. See how there has, uh, vision impairment and it has one, okay, and has sixty-nine, but, you know, that's what it looks like, I thought maybe, okay, we had somebody there, but really we never had it filled. And is there any others that go down the line that, you know, maybe looks like we put, we, we funded them, but we never had the staff of them?
No, we had the staff for... No, we were staff for all of these.
All the rest, uh, ju- it's just the vi- the vision impairment? And that's why we saw such a large amount out of the Perkins?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Uh, is there any hopes of finding somebody for that position?
So like I mentioned in the last meeting, it's, it's a tough situation, there are not a lot of people out there. It's a nation problem, nationwide problem. So we're gonna continue to look and I am actively out there looking and constantly trying to find connections with different organizations that I'm connected to to find various people. Um, it's just difficult cause it's such a low pool of people.
Yeah, okay, great, thank you on that. Um, and just to piggyback, but not to be as long as Brian, on the social workers, um, it, we, uh, is there any possibility, and he is right, we hear it all the time from the colleges themselves, that we are not doing a good job partnering with them. Um, you know, we had a great partnership with Gordon College. We, um, ended that partnership, um, and we got a lot of social workers from there. And I wish that at some point maybe we could revisit that. There's a new, I think, administration over there and maybe it'd be worth our while. But what about Lynn Community Health Center? You know, they have the clinics in there and they have nurses. Is it a possibility you could speak to Lynn Community Health Center and see if they are interested?
In terms of?
Um, placing social workers in their clinics to be a support?
Yeah, there is a behavioral health model that, that is in schools. Matter of fact, we're adding one at Fallon, uh, for next year. So, so there, yeah, so there is behavior, they do offer behavioral health through the school-based health.
Do you know if they offer it at, uh, Thurgood Marshall?
Yeah, yes, absolutely.
Okay, and maybe they would be willing to increase it? You know, if students are concerned and they're addressing suicide, bulimia, things that are very serious, I think, I think we should, you know, see if possibly, if we can't do it in a budget, that maybe we need to reach out to them. But we, we do need to reach out. You know, we turned down Salem State for its community school and, you know, during the interviews, I really love community schools. And I don't see it anywhere unless it's hidden in this budget, but there isn't one even attempt at opening a community school. And because we turned down Salem State, they went to Revere and Revere has benefited by that. So I wish, I wish we would think about that. Um, on the... I'm not gonna do that one. Under the transportation, why do we have homeless DCF that we didn't have a cost for before and now we have five hundred and fifty thousand?
That's actually, uh, we do have it now, it's just breaking it out because when we do our state report to the Department of Education, we have to break it out. And for next year, if we fund it all into one line, uh, the transportation, it, it saves a transportation person from going through every bill, finding every kid and breaking them in from just regular homeless to DCF homeless.
Okay, do they reimburse us?
No.
Okay, and is there a specific reason why inside went up five hundred thousand on transportation?
It's a new contract.
Okay.
It's a new three-year contract.
So probably about the same number of kids, but a five hundred thousand dollar increase.
But that's a stable contract for three years with no built-in increases.
Okay.
So that should stabilize.
Um, under food service, it's, we're cutting a clerical salary job.
That's correct, uh, as we, uh, we had a person retire this year and as you're aware, we went to CEP this year. So there were no more paper applications. That person, person used to collect all the paper applications after manually putting them into our system. So since now that's all done by the state through what people that are on, receiving direct services, there's no need for any paper applications and tracking those. So at this point, there's that position, uh, we just don't need, we believe need to fill it again.
Okay. As we talked about before, we get, we have lots of concerns when it comes to the cafeteria. Um, are they doing all the paperwork now, the people who are working in the cafeteria?
No, the paperwork, uh, that was done by, these were done by principals collecting paper applications and the clerks in the schools and they would send them here. There is no more collection of any paperwork, that's all done, the state determines, uh, sends us a list of all students receiving and that's handled on a spreadsheet. So alls we have to do is just kind of validate it through our, um, uh, data center with against our SIMS data. So it's just a cross-referencing of that data where there's, this person didn't do that, they would just enter all those paper applications in and then do that. So that, that's all, that piece of work's completely gone.
Okay, and under athletics and health, I know we added on the three athletic trainers, but why are we cutting EMTs?
That's the same thing, that was the line that it was called, so that's, we were paying.
So that's not like if we have a football game and we pay for, you know, ambulances there, EMTs to be?
We don't, we don't pay for the, they come, they.
They just come, okay, so that's just in place of?
Yeah, that was the athletic trainers position line they were being paid out of and, uh, since we're hiring them.
And, um, under the early childcare center, there are two jobs left behind, uh, reading and school social worker. So where would they, is, are they staying there because of the middle school? Is that what the story is of the academy?
Yes.
Okay, and, um, has, how, how are those jobs taken care of as far as with going to other places? Have, has?
You mean the, the classrooms that are, so?
Not just the classroom, I'm talking about the actual staff.
Right, so, um, they will receive closed letters, uh, bu-
All staff, well, this is a change.
Tomorrow, yeah. Uh, and then on the third, uh, next week, we're, uh, yep, uh, they'll be, that's the first posting. So they'll see, and, and, and we've, I've gone to ECC twice to talk to them about, uh, the change and, and our plans. So they're well aware, um, and when the postings go up, they can, they can engage.
Okay, and so everybody is eligible to bid on all the jobs that are over there, okay? And, um...
If they're eligible, like a non-professional status.
Right, non.
You know, would have to wait till the, the process has gone through and then would be called down.
Okay. And just one more. Okay, and just one last thing. The Callahan, we were told there were extra classrooms there and that's why we were moving some classrooms to there. Did we move some to Callahan, or is something be moving there? Because I noticed we moved some there, but then we took classrooms out? It's thirty-two and thirty-two, wasn't there four classrooms?
It was, they had dividers, are you talking about when they closed Crew and Circle?
Didn't we recently hear that there were extra classrooms at Callahan?
Not that I've heard.
No, okay.
They moved one from the ECC, there's a new classroom there and one of the existing ones got moved to Connery and the other one got moved to Washington.
And there's an opening of, I want to say, a grade one, grade one due to enrollment.
That's correct.
We added a K this year, we added a K after the beginning of the school year. We're going to have to add an additional K, I mean, an additional first grade.
Okay, great, that's it.
Member Gailey?
I don't want to hold you up, but I have nineteen questions to go through. But I answered some, some were answered. So this one, basically, Kevin, you could just wrap this up in a matter of seconds for me. I'm looking at the initial proposed budget and school operating budget, what are tailings? It says tailings were carried forward plus the Lynn City Council improvement, additional four million, one hundred and eighty. What are these tailings?
Unexpended funds from the prior year.
Okay, so like coming up this September, we will have some tailings maybe if we get more money from the state?
Not, well, that would be different, if we get more money, if we get more money from the state, that would be an additional appropriation. Okay, so that's different. Tailings was, we were under net school spending, so we were mandated to carry any funds from the prior year. But if you recall, that was due, we were in contract negotiations and working with unions on raises and that was waiting to get that resolved and that resolved in August of that year. So we had those funds sitting there, so that's why they got pulled forward.
All right, well, that was a good one for me because I was like, tailings, what the heck? And you answered that question. I didn't see in the report anywhere projecting class size, spending summary or pie chart.
I haven't finished the pie charts because of, this just came, kind of came out the end of last week. So I will have that for the next meeting because I have to manually enter everybody in to get those pie charts. So takes a little bit of time, but you'll have them for the next meeting or if I get them done, I'll send them home to you.
Okay, and to piggyback with Brian on the social workers, I did notice that Lynnwood Sewell Anderson Shoemaker do not have one. And with the new SEL program going in, I was wondering how are we going to implement an SEL program if we don't have anyone? Or is it, am I confusing the SEL with?
The SEL curriculum is taught by teachers.
Taught by the teachers. Okay, and then I didn't see a social worker at English.
Yeah, so that was what I addressed right at the end, to say that that position was added using a TBD at the beginning of this year. That position will be there for next year.
Okay, and for the next meeting, because time is rarely, rarely, we've been here a while. I'd like you to just break down the Linvo Tech budget for me.
Sure.
So that I can understand and maybe the rest of the school committee could understand how the discovery classes are, are they inside that budget for Linvo Tech?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I would think it would be, but I don't, I can't see and I can't separate it to say this is middle school.
Discover vocational?
You go through that whole thing, you'll see. Okay, so is there any place in the budget that I would find the total number of social workers in the district?
Uh, no, well, actually, no, it's on the, is it on the curriculum page?
No, they're on every school.
That's what I figured out, I went through the whole, I went through this whole thing page by page and I didn't see it, but then I started picking up like, oh, here's a social worker here. So I just wanted to know.
I thought they are itinerant because they're on the, I thought they were on the curriculum, it's getting late. We're on the curriculum page because they are itinerant. I believe there are twenty-five, but they, but you know, I can get that information for you.
Okay, and then I was at, in the fine arts and I noticed that they cut the drill instructor, band stipend in middle school band, that's cut?
No, it's all been consolidated into that one line.
Wasn't on there, right?
It's consolidated into the one line.
It's just reorganized.
All right, so I did notice that because I would be really upset with you because drill instructor, you know, you know how we love sergeant major?
I wouldn't do that, yeah.
Then I just recently heard that Salem State Collaborative is how our girls went to Y's, the Y's program, which is women in science and engineering. And I would really like to see that Salem State Collaborative back because we're losing a little bit more than I thought with the teachers not being interested, but some are, some not. And I could not find the book budget for SEL. You know, like we looked at the books, Brian and I, we couldn't find where with the cost of the books. Now, sometimes you have textbooks and the cost of them.
They do have the section, but it's not in there.
Is she talking about the textbooks?
You know how?
Are you talking about the textbooks?
Yeah, the textbooks.
Okay, so all textbooks, whether it's special ed, whether it's ELL, would be, SEL would be in the curriculum budget. They manage the purchase and oversee all curriculum texts.
Okay, I'll look at that.
Okay.
Thank you. Is it possible that student handbooks be printed at Linvo Tech?
I did get your questions and I inquired about that, it's a great question. And that has been looked at in the past. My understanding is the reason why they did not go that direction is because it actually costs more to do it here than it does to send it out.
What is the cost of the Microsoft license?
Of a what?
Microsoft license. You know, like we have this license that we're renewing in December, it's called Microsoft Browser that we use.
So it's software, so the Microsoft suite, Microsoft Word, Excel, PowerPoint, I believe, I don't know if Kevin has that. I believe it's a hundred thousand dollars, but don't quote me on that, I can get back to you on that question.
We would have to check.
Then we could talk about Google and apps. Skip the next one. Oh, who does the maintenance for the attendance officers cause?
The DPW.
That's what I thought, but I wasn't sure.
They just bill us.
And what is ASOP, I forgot. What's the acronym?
It's the substitute technology.
Okay, that's for like?
So that's for teachers when they're going to be out, they go onto ASOP, they put it in, principals monitor it and substitutes can, you know, choose jobs off of it.
Okay, and then number sixteen, I'm not sure if it was legitimate. The superintendent's salary is the same for nineteen and the same for the twenty-year coming in, nineteen, twenty as it was for eighteen, nineteen. It's the same amount, but I would think it would be different because you're a new superintendent. So I wasn't sure about that. We're almost done, folks. Seventeen, why do, why do we have an increase in legal cost from ten thousand to twenty-five? Is there something we should know?
This is superintendent's part, not the school committee.
I didn't get a chance to research that question, but I mean, the costs are significant. I mean, we have this gentleman right here, but typically related to special ed issues, sometimes OCR issues. We do work with Stoneman Chandler and the idea is to make sure that we have enough to accommodate our needs.
All right, and then the newsletter is forty-eight thousand. Then I put a comment there because I keep pushing for Salem State Collaborative. And women in science and engineering girls was cut. And the last question I have, I told you I'd be fast, Mr. St... Do we still alternate the teams that get new team uniforms in school, you know, like?
I believe they, I asked, they have a five-year plan, so we, every year, there should be uniforms that are coming up.
For different?
For, yeah, so and it's, you know, boys and girls, you know, but it might be all the basketball, boys and girls this year and baseball next year and football and various track.
Last year, they did baseball and softball and track, so they won't do it again for another three to five years depending on the condition.
And that was it for my questions, thank you.
Thank you, Member Ford.
I basically had, I looked at the social worker and I, I do think that's a very important issue and I was concerned about the fact that they showed none at Lynn English. There was none at Fallon, Lynnwood Sewell and Shoemaker, but also the one that concerned me was English.
Fallon has one, it's just called a clinical director.
And we're adding a behavioral health feature there through Lynn Community Health, so lots of support.
Member Sadaway?
Thank you. My colleagues have all addressed several dozen questions, which has limited my questions. But I just want to emphasize that today, the mayor had a proclamation about mental health at Ingalls, which was wonderful. We emphasized the fact that our students' well-being is extremely important, okay? And then today at the graduation for Fecto Larry, we saw how the speaker spoke about how through trauma, she was able to get through it because of the resources she had at her school. You look at the proposed budget, there's a hundred and four students and there are two social workers in this school, right?
At Fecto Larry. Yep.
So just with the numbers, there's two in a hundred and four, obviously they're getting the resources from them. So I can only imagine what one social worker has to deal with with fourteen or fifteen hundred students. So I just want to emphasize that we have the data here that shows that it works and these kids are at this school, but like you said during your speech, for multiple different reasons. And, you know, losing a father, the speaker spoke about, was heartbreaking, heartbreaking. But the fact that she was able to come to school and speak to people about it was amazing. So I also got the email from the students and I appreciate their initiative and the fact that they're reaching out to us. We were able to take a tour of Ingalls in their Lynn Community Health base center, which is wonderful, okay? And they work with each other. They even told me that there's no Spanish-speaking person, like teacher in that school and a lot of the things gets funneled through them because they're bilingual, which then gets to the teachers. And that's not a job that they have to do, but the fact that that's a resource there is amazing. And the plan they said was that they were going to add a school-based program at least once a year if the size allows for it. So Lynn Community Health understands that, and I got a percentage, it's more than sixty or seventy percent of our students are, are not customers, but are patients. So if they can service them in our schools, it's better for them. So I already see that that's moving forward, but that doesn't take the onus off of us and our responsibility. So I just wanted to share that with my brothers and sisters, I feel like I'm out of court. My colleagues, that, you know, even though we don't see it here, things are working behind the scenes. But I do want to emphasize that social workers are extremely important, especially without social, emotional issues. I did, you know, have other questions, but I'll wait till June because it's already nine forty-five.
Michael said they have two social workers with the, with the health center. So if we get more health, you know, more Lynn Community Health centers into additional schools, they bring social workers with them.
Any issue, if you're hungry, they're going to find a place for you to eat. If you need clothes, they're going to find a place for you, you know, it's such a great resource for the city and our students and it's, it was very impressive. And I, again, Mr. Mayor, the fact that we made that proclamation, you made that proclamation for the city and we were able to witness it and then take a tour of Ingalls, a school that I went to, was good. So I appreciate that.
Talking to them was very enlightening, Dave. Appreciate it all with us, Michael and I.
And they're looking forward to continuing to work with us within the parameters of what's available. Any other questions? Again, I think there'll be an opportunity to, after tonight, to ask more questions, both directly through the superintendent that we can then address on June thirteenth at our next meeting. I know it's been a long night, but you know, either later tonight or tomorrow, over the next few days, I'm sure there'll be other questions and other issues that everyone has. And so clearly those are issues we can address at the next meeting and both in preliminary discussion, in preliminary presentations, as you have to the superintendent and as well as discussion at the next meeting. So thank you very much.
Thank you for the presentation. It's a great discussion to get a chance to really get our hands around the budget and continue that discussion over the next few weeks. The final meeting on the twenty-seventh will be the public hearing, so there's definitely time to continue to dive into this, look through it and come up with more questions and thoughts on what the budget's all about. So thank you all. Next, we're into new business, there's some field trip requests. First is Skills USA.
Yeah, I mean...
Dr. Tutwell would like to speak.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to...
No, I was going to say, so you can discuss them.
Kind of move it along, here we go. We all just came from text graduation, we know what an incredible program, Skills USA program is. Intending to go to the Skills USA Conference in Louisville, June twenty-fourth to the twenty-ninth, requires your approval and I recommend it.
It's a motion?
A motion. A motion to approve Skill USA to National Skills USA Leadership and Skills Conference in Louisville, Kentucky from June twenty-fourth to the twenty-ninth, two thousand and nineteen.
Second.
Need to roll call?
Mr. Cassianus?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Ms. Gailey?
Yes.
Mr. Nicholson?
Yes.
Ms. Sadway?
Yes.
Mayor McGee?
Yes. If you'd like to speak.
Certainly, you know, any opportunity, we can provide students to travel through our language programs is a good one. And English High is proposing to bring a group of students to either Panama or Ecuador next April vacation, plenty of time to raise funds or save them to go. I think it's awesome and I support it fully, I recommend it.
Motion?
Motion to approve English High students to Panama or Ecuador for April vacation, two thousand and twenty.
Second.
Requires roll call?
Mr. Cassianus?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Ms. Gailey?
Yes.
Mr. Nicholson?
Yes.
Sadway?
C, yes.
Mayor McGee?
Yes. Next on the agenda is Principal Hebert from Dewitt School requests to accept various donations totaling three hundred from local businesses.
Support it fully.
So motion?
Motion to accept the various donations totaling three hundred dollars for local businesses at Dewitt School.
Second.
Roll call required.
Mr. Cassianus?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Ms. Gailey?
Yes.
Mr. Nicholson?
Yes.
Sadway?
Yes.
Mayor McGee?
Yes. Next on the agenda, the Italian Community Center of Greater Lynn intends to offer a thousand-dollar scholarship to a one-lin public school senior.
Also a wonderful opportunity for a deserving senior.
Motion to accept a thousand-dollar scholarship from the Italian Community Center of Greater Lynn.
Second.
Second.
Roll call required.
Mr. Cassianus?
Yes.
Ms. Capow?
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Ms. Gailey?
Yes.
Mr. Nicholson?
Yes.
Ms. Sadway?
Yes.
Yes. Next on the agenda is the Lynn Teachers Union, Local ten, one oh three seven. Request that a union leave of absence be granted to President Sheila O'Neill for the two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty school year. Motion?
Motion to grant.
Clarification, it shouldn't have my name there.
That's a good, for the president. So the clarification is for the president, but the clarification would be the president.
So motion?
Thank you.
Sorry. I don't think he has the same thing.
That's the union's request to the committee.
Oh, okay.
Motion to approve the request that a union leave of absence be granted to the president of the Lynn Teachers Union, Local ten thirty-seven, for the two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty school year.
Second.
Roll call required.
Mr. Cassianus?
Yes.
Ms. Capow?
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Ms. Gailey?
Yes.
Mr. Nicholson?
Yes.
Ms. Sadway?
Yes.
Mayor McGee?
Yes. Next is ratification of votes taken in the Policy Subcommittee meeting on May fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen.
Yeah, so we had a Policy Subcommittee meeting a couple of weeks ago to go over the attendance policy. That was approved and recommended to the full committee and now the full committee is voting on it. the full committee is voting on it to adopt the policy. And that's the policy that was distributed ahead of that subcommittee meeting. You also all have a copy of it in your, in your packet here.
A motion.
So a motion from the chair to accept the.
Yeah, a motion to, it's the motion to approve the policy to report to the full committee for approval.
Okay.
Second.
Second. Roll call?
Mr. Cassianus?
Yes.
Mr. Capola?
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Ms. Gately?
Yes.
Mr. Nicholson?
Yes.
Ms. Sadowite?
Yes.
Mayor McGee?
Yes.
And now, we'll make a motion to accept the attendance policy.
That was, we just made that.
Okay, okay. Just wanted to make sure.
We'll have to approve it again at the next meeting, right? After anyone else.
It stands for one month, I mean, one meeting.
Okay.
Next up. Yes, Member Sadowite?
I was going to request the executive session.
Next on the agenda is a request for executive session for contract negotiations. Attorney Mahos, you'd like to speak to this?
Yeah, I've had a contract with the city solicitor's office, Solicitor Mark Kopoulos, and we have to follow some procedures relative to the rule of necessity because of conflict of interest in various members of the school committee. Mr. Mark Kopoulos wanted me to read his letter into the minutes of the meeting, so I will do that. "This mail to Thomas and McGee, Honorable Mayor. Reprocedure for invoking the rule of necessity where an elected board lacks a quorum. Your Honorable Mayor, pursuant to your request for an opinion, please be advised that after reviewing the applicable general laws, consulting with the General Counsel of the Ethics Commission, the administrative procedure required to invoke the rule of necessity where an elected board lacks a quorum is as follows. School Committee Attorney John Mahos has informed me that the four of the seven members of the school committee have conflicts of interest. To disqualify them from participating in any votes, required to enter into a proposed collective bargaining agreement reached between school committee employer and school collective bargaining organization. These disqualifying conflicts of interest involve financial interests of immediate family. Where four of the school committee members are disqualified, the school committee lacks a quorum to take any such votes concerning the collective bargaining agreement. Pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 150E, the school committee is charged with the responsibility of entering into such collective bargaining agreements. There is no other board or other authority. In the City of Lynn, with legal authority to act in place of the school committee, the rule of necessity can only be used in the very limited circumstances when an elected board is legally required to take certain actions which cannot be undertaken by any other board or authority, and it lacks enough members to take valid official action solely due to board members being disqualified for conflicts of interest from participating in the matter. The rule of necessity may not be used when a board merely has discretion to act or when it wants to act. In this instance, the board must act, and there's no other to act in its place. Rule of necessity may be used only as a last resort in order to carry out legally required actions, and otherwise will be prohibited by the conflict of interest law. It is the opinion of this office that Mayor McGee, as Chairman of the elected school committee, committee, where there's no conflict of interest, may invoke the rule of necessity. Advisory 0505, the rule of necessity dated 12/1/2005, revised October 17, 2013, and mostly recently revised May 16, 2019. After having received this legal advice from the law department based on extensive research and consultation with the State Ethics Commission, therefore, if and when the rule of necessity is invoked by the mayor, each board member who has a conflict must disclose the facts that created his or her respective conflict, and then may participate in the matter. If the rule is invoked, the following matters must be discussed, and the minutes of the meeting should clearly, A, state that the board lacked a sufficient number of members, therefore lacking a quorum necessary to take a valid vote as a result of disqualification of members due to a conflict of interest. B, include the facts disclosed by each disqualified member which created his or her conflict. C, identify the legal authority requiring the board action at the meeting that is, that is, and this is the authority, Chapter 150E requirement that the school committee enter the school collective bargaining organization. There is no, D, there is no other board or authority in the city that can legally act in this matter. E, receipt of legal advice from the law department in conjunction with the State Ethics Commission, and F, record that as a last resort, the rule of necessity was invoked so that these members disqualified could participate to constitute a quorum. Once the above items have been discussed and entered into the record, the school committee may proceed with its proposed motions to enter into a proposed collective bargaining agreement with any ancillary motion that may be required to effectuate the main motion. The invocation of the rule of necessity must be documented by the school committee in our writing, that is, the votes in the minutes of the meeting, which are required to be filed publicly with the city clerk's office. Immediately after the votes are taken, there should be a motion to reconsider so that the votes become final, thereby eliminating the rule of necessity of having to be invoked again. Kind of let me know if you have any questions or concerns. Very truly yours, Judge S. Markopolis.
As one of the circumstances directed in the letter, and the reality of four members having a conflict on the school committee board, I am invoking the rule of necessity, and would follow the recommendations to make that qualifications based on what the George Markopolis City Law Department has indicated. So I am invoking the rule of necessity, and as it's invoked, each board member who has a conflict would disclose the facts that create that conflict, and then may participate in the matter. So we have to go through this before we do anything else. So, if there are members on the board, which I think we all anticipate there are four members, I think individually would, at this point, state what their conflict would be related to that. Member Capola?
Okay, I will disclose that I do have a conflict. I have a daughter who is employed by the Lynn Public Schools and a member of the Lynn Teachers Union.
Thank you.
I have a conflict, I have two daughters that are part of the Lynn Teachers Union.
I have a.
Member Sadowite, so Member Ford has indicated, Member Sadowite?
I have a conflict that I need to disclose. My wife is employed by the Lynn Public Schools as a school nurse.
Okay. Member Gately?
I have a conflict of interest, I'd like to disclose that I am a Lynn, Lynn Public Schools retired teacher, are the Lynn Public Schools Teachers Union delegate to the Northshore Labor Council until the end of June, and then I am a retired, I'm on the retired teachers' health insurance for Lynn Public Schools.
Sorry if this is through you, Attorney Mahos, but the, after those four committee members have indicated that, there is a lack of sufficient number of members to allow us to have a quorum. So we're lacking a quorum as a result of the four members that have identified that conflict. The facts disclosed by each disqualified member which is or hers do, I don't know if you want to speak to that, Member Mahos?
Well, just, for the record, Attorney Sadowite, your wife is a nurse, but that wouldn't affect, affect.
And I'm on her health insurance.
Yes. Okay. Thank you. So as indicated, and I think, Attorney Mahos, we do have a, based on those four conflicts, we do have a lack of a quorum.
Invoking the rule of necessity.
And so, that's why I'm invoking, invoking the rule of necessity. Again, the legal authority requiring the action is Chapter 150E that requires us to get into a school committee and school collective bargaining, and there is no other board or entity in the city that could take the place of the actions that we will take and related to this action. We have received legal advice from the law department, this is the letter that we've received. I know that they were in direct discussions with the State Ethics Commission, so that has been identified, and I've invoked the rule of necessity because of that disqualification. And once we have, I think we've met all of those requirements, we then can.
We're ongoing.
We can actually vote at this point to go into, and then this is all, obviously, part of the minutes that would be submitted to the clerk. So at this point, based on the invocation of the rule and identifying all the facts, we can, yes, Member Mahos?
The purpose of the executive session is collective bargaining.
Yes. We're going to vote to go into executive session, and the purpose of the executive session is to go in to discuss collective bargaining related to 150E requirements of the school committee. Member Gately?
Could we move that till after communication and information by the superintendent? You know how sometimes we table it, and then we do the communication, and then we.
That's what we usually do.
We could do that if the committee so chooses. Now that we have invoked the rule of necessity, there's a motion on the table to then take up the vote and the agenda item to go into an executive session after the superintendent's presentation to the.
Second.
Second, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I don't know that we need a roll call on that. Nope, okay. So, at this point, we will go to communication and information from the superintendent.
I will move quickly.
Oh.
Just a few matters of import to share with you. Quickly, I've received a draft report, as I mentioned earlier, regarding the network virus remediation from Charles River Associates. Therein, they report that their investigation, through their investigation, no personal information was compromised. They were unable to pinpoint the specific cause, but believe it to be related to an infected attachment sent via email. We're pleased to share that we are back to full functionality at this point. We continue to experience some hiccups around printers and things of that nature, but we're back in stride nonetheless. When the final report is produced, I will share. As promised, I'm happy to share with a, share a quick breakdown of the students headed to the Discovery Academy for Fall 2019. There are 306 students, 203 regular education students, 55 Ls, and 48 special ed students, 66 18 and 16% respectively. This breakdown reflects nearly, pretty close to the demographics district-wide. The students represent Breed at 47%, Marshall at 40%, and Pickering at 13%. The program's coming together nicely, and we're excited about it. I want to publicly thank Carissa Karakides and her team, who, they're doing yeoman's work over there, to make this all that it should be. We'll close out the year on the 18th of June, and then get right to work readying the space for the fall. There's been some discussion system-wide on the shift to itinerant for specific groups of teachers, namely, reading and inclusion. The shift allows for expedient flexibility to meet the needs of students without adding additional staffing. For example, if the number of Ls in one school decreased during the school year while the numbers increased at another school, which happens quite frequently, as you might imagine, with itinerant staffing, we would assign the junior-most ESL teacher a day or more at the latter school to provide ESL services for students. Excuse me. Without this flexibility, we would hire an additional teacher for the school requiring support, even though there is flexibility within the existing staffing in the district. To be clear, there's a strong history of this shift in the district. All social workers are itinerant. Currently, elementary PE, art, and music teachers are itinerant. Three years ago, elementary ESL teachers became itinerant. This year, secondary ESL teachers are also teaching in the itinerant category. The recent shifts have happened without incident and have proven really effective for meeting students' needs, first and foremost, and from a budget standpoint. To be clear, the purpose is not to create wholesale change in schools. Stability is paramount. As we did recently in the shift for ESL teachers, positions must be closed and reclassified, but the vast majority of teachers landed right back in the same position at the same school. This is not about disruption, it's about the flexibility to meet student needs. We met with the Teachers Union this morning and worked out a plan for the shift that both honors the philosophy of the shift to itinerant and respects teacher seniority. I want you to be clear on the thinking, as I don't recall a conversation on it in this space in previous years. I want to make you aware that we, in partnership with Campfire and the Boys and Girls Club, are stepping into the 21st Century Community Learning Center Grant Arena. Starting small, the proposal will feature free after-school programming at Cobbett and Washington Elementary Schools. The programming will offer a mix of academic enrichment, targeted academic enrichment, homework help, and activities. We're excited about this opportunity, and I'll keep you posted as it develops.
Two schools.
In closing, there were two wonderful high school graduations today, and there are two more tomorrow. And did I mention that this is my favorite time of the year? As Member Sadowite pointed out at the tech graduation, there were graduates wearing silver stoles to represent successful completion of the seal of bilinguacy. But I want to share this with you, it was a text message from Rania Caldwell to Deb, who shared it with me. Just wanted you to let you know that we have 78 students officially, who will officially earn the seal. 13 students are currently Ls, and 52 are former Ls. All students had a home language other than English. Five of them earned the seal of distinction. We emailed the Department of Ed our numbers today, and we were told that we were the only district in the state to take on the portfolios for lower incidence languages, and that they appreciated our hard work in acknowledging those students. And apparently, the item also interviewed some of the students at Classical today who earned the seal. So I just wanted to share that and congratulate the students first and foremost, and then Rania Caldwell and her team, who I continue to impress and amaze me every day. That is all I have.
Thank you, Superintendent. I'd like to make a comment, and I'll relate it, Member Sadowite?
Okay. The itinerant that you had mentioned, you had early sent it to us, and I just had a question about how it was titled. So it says that it's an agreement between the Lynn School Committee and the Lynn Teachers Union, but it's signed by you. So my assumption is it should be the Lynn Public Schools, because we don't have any say on these hires for this position.
So it's my understanding, and Attorney Mahos can keep me honest here, that I have the authority to impact bargain with the collective bargaining units, Teachers Union, Administrative Union on a number of issues.
It's part of the grievance arbitration procedure. I didn't hear the main.
Well, it just says it's an agreement between the Lynn School Committee and the Lynn Teachers Union, but my, when I read that, it was signed by Patrick, and we don't have any hiring authority over these positions, so I don't understand why it would even involve us.
In the, in the front of the contract, the teachers' contract, it clearly states who represents you, and Patrick is a representation, Kevin is also a representation of you as a school committee. So that's why it's, the contract is between us and the Lynn School Committee, but they are your representation.
To make that agreement.
In the contract, page two.
That's the only question I had, we can talk about it, that's fine.
Thank you. No, thank you for asking the question. I just want to make a comment on the Century 21st Grants. I have talked to the superintendent, and as many of you know, I've been very supportive of after-school opportunities and programs, and so I'm very excited to see that we are starting to move into that area with at least two schools, and putting those grants out there, and I'm, I think it's an exciting opportunity to see how it works and hopefully build on that. So I just wanted to thank the superintendent and the administration for stepping up and moving in that direction. I think it's great.
Thank you.
And next on the agenda is a request for executive session for contract negotiations with Teachers Union, Local 1037, Lynn School Administrators Association, Vice Principals, and Teamsters, Local 42, as a request and a motion to go into executive session.
A motion to go into executive session for contract negotiations. Motion to go into executive session for contract negotiations with Teachers Union Local 1037, Lynn School Administrative Association Vice Principals, and Teamsters Local 42.
Does a roll call require?
Mr. Castellanos?
Yes.
Mr. Capola?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Gaetley?
Yes.
Mr. Nicholson?
Yes.
Sadoway?
Yes.
Yes. And I make a motion to reconsider that vote. For reconsideration? There's a second? That requires a roll call?
Okay, I can do it. Mr. Castellanos?
Yes.
Mr. Capola?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Gaetley?
Yes.
Mr. Nicholson?
Yes.
Sadoway?
Yes.
Jim McGee?
Yes. And as was indicated in the letter, and I'll explain it, and I think, just to reiterate so people in the audience understand, that after invoking the rule of necessity, the recommendation was that after we had taken a roll call vote, that we then do a rate reconsideration of that vote, which means that vote is actually final. Which, so we will do that on our votes related to this rule of necessity. So that's why we took a second reconsideration vote, so people in the audience can understand that. At this point, we will go into executive session related to the motion that was made.
What is this one?
Oh, this is what we did tonight?
No, no, no. This, this...
Hi.
Hi, everyone.
A motion to come back into regular session. Is there a motion? There's a second. Moved in second. Need a roll call?
Cassianus?
Yes.
Ms. Capola?
Yes.
Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Ms. Caitlin?
Yes.
Mr. Nicholson?
Yes.
Mr. Studd, right?
Yes.
I make a motion to approve an action that took place in executive session, which was for contract negotiations with the teachers' union, Local 1037.
which was for contract negotiations with the teachers' union, Local 1037 Lynn School Administration.